We'll call the Wichita Board of Education meeting in order for August 26, 2024. We'd like to, first off, thank the communication team that did an outstanding job of doing a last-minute change from North High. Had an electrical problem over there that's already been fixed, but it was too late. We had to make a decision and we quickly moved down to AMAC and we cannot do it without you guys. And Jennifer is still actually working as we speak. And so we really appreciate the people who put on these meetings and do all this work for us that really makes this possible. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. Roll call is all seven members are here. If you join with me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is led by the Hamilton Middle School JROTC cadets. Commanding the color guard is Cadet Sergeant First Class Leland Clay. He's escorted by Cadet Sergeant Brooklyn Ross. Carrying the Kansas flag is Cadet Sergeant First Class Talalyn Queen. She is escorted by Cadet Corporal Brooklyn Ross. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And it's great to see some Hamilton staff and supporters and parents here as well to support their students. We appreciate that very much. Patrick, first item, please.
Item under reports, good news.
Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the board. I want to say first, I appreciate your kind words for the team that busted their backsides to make this happen. But I do also want to mention, I learned that with the Hamilton cadets, two of them apparently ended up having a conflict because of the location change. So, two of the young people that you just saw in front of you found out about this about an hour and 15 minutes before now. And they responded quickly and got suited up and were here and practiced. And you would never have known had I not mentioned it. And I thought it was worthy of acknowledging them for turning on a dime. And as Colonel Poole said, that's just what we do in the Army. So, we appreciate all of the folks that worked hard to make this happen. We have two wonderful good news items tonight. This is all about celebrating success. And part of this success you get to champion this evening is it comes with a nice price tag in the form of a grant that will help improve the energy efficiency in our schools. So, Holly Wilson from our grants department is here to tell you more about the U.S. Department of Energy Cooperative Renew America School Prize that will benefit 21 schools in our district and help to improve the energy efficiency in our buildings. So, without further ado, Holly is here to tell you more.
Can you all hear me if I don't bring that? Okay, good. I'm a little short. Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the BOE. I am excited to be here tonight alongside Luke, he'll be up here if we have questions, to announce that earlier this month Wichita Public Schools was awarded a Department of Energy Renew America Schools Prize. This looks like $15.3 million to our district over the timeframe of possibly three to four years. This is a little bit different than a traditional grant. This is actually called a negotiated agreement. So, in the next few minutes, I would like to give an overview of this prize, how it's going to impact the district, and introduce the stakeholders that helped put this together for us. The Renew America School Prize is a three-phase, $190 million investment to help K-12 public schools make energy upgrades that will decrease energy use and costs, improve indoor air quality, and foster healthier learning environments for students and teachers. This award is part of the Justice 40 Initiative, which ensures that 40% of the funding for the total prize will go to disadvantaged communities. The Department of Energy identified 21 Phase 1 winners who will earn a $300,000 cash prize. In addition, 16 of those were able to move on to Phase 2 and Phase 3, Wichita is one of those. These cooperative agreements with Department of Energy, which will invest in 320 school facilities across 25 states directly benefiting over 123,000 students and 9,100 teachers nationwide. The development of the Renew America's Prize revolved around some alarming statistics that our district is all too aware of. There are around 100,000 schools nationwide and 50% of them require major upgrades, earning the U.S. a D+ in the 2021 infrastructure scorecard. There's $85 billion shortfall in deferred maintenance and capital funding for school facilities nationwide. Capital funding is historically 37% lower in high-poverty districts. It gets worse if that district serves a rural community or minorities. If those reasons weren't enough, energy consumption is the second highest expense for school districts nationwide. We know all of this, we're living it right now. That's why it's so exciting that we're getting this award. Now, how's this going to impact us? This entire grant project was developed alongside and completely aligned to the Facility Master Plan. This ensures that we could leverage dollars, whether federal, state, or local, to improve facilities and reduce deferred maintenance costs. With these funds, we plan to implement energy efficiency initiatives to install solar panels where appropriate and modernize lighting, HVAC, and building envelopes. Funding these measures in the portfolio of 21 prescribed schools will help address the $1.2 billion in deferred maintenance that Wichita Public Schools faces across the district. Our overall goals are to, 1, implement energy efficiency and renewable energy projects to achieve a sustained reduction in energy use and utility bills; 2, improve the student classroom experience; and 3, benefit the community through some vendor training and outreach and support job opportunities in the local area. The schools that will be impacted are Cessna, Krista McCullough Academy, Cloud, Coleman, College Hill, Colvin, Dodge, Earhart, Gammon, Gordon Parks Academy, Horace Mann, Jackson, Lawrence, Mueller, Ortiz, Southeast High School, Spate, Stucky, Washington, Woodman. We paid close attention to the Justice 40 Initiative. The majority of these schools lie in a disadvantaged area as defined by the Department of Energy or serve a high number of disadvantaged students. This project will be implemented in phases over the next few years. This negotiated agreement for work on Phase 2 is already underway. The phase, this phase is $1 million designated for high-level energy audits, targeting buildings along with the beginning work of engaging the school communities that we are proposing work. The audits will have a full reported recommendations for energy upgrades where most cost-effective and where dollars can be saved and energy upgrades are completed. The district does have a 5% cost share at this phase, which looks like to be around $52,000. It's a 5%. Once those audits are completed and the scope of work is developed, we will begin Phase 3 of the project with $14 million. This is where the construction on buildings for the energy upgrades is performed. The district has a cost share at this phase of 25%. This is spread out over the length of Phase 3, so whether in our negotiated agreement that looks like three years, four years, five years, whatever we determine is appropriate, it is spread out. The district will be working with a vendor to apply for energy credits to help offset the amount of the district's cost share. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to the team of stakeholders that helped build this project. Without their dedication, time, and true belief that this is what our district needs, we would not have been able to pull this off with success. If you are with us tonight, please stand and give a little wave. From my team, Tadana Neal, technician. Luke Newman, of course, Division Director of Facilities. Jason Murdock, Manager Building Grounds and Maintenance. Justin Waters, Technician in Energy Management. Damian Bruce, Technician, Energy Management. April Webb, Supervisor in the Budgeting Department. John Weese, Director, Supply Chain Management. Verna Murdock, Purchasing Agent. Christina Long, President, Owner of Create Campaign and CML Collective. Bryce Graham, President, Richard Robertson Community Benefits Agreement. Clint Guy, Secretary, Richard Robertson Community Benefits Agreement. And of course, our ESCO, which is our energy service company for this particular beginning of the project, Kobe Camp Schroeder, President of Navitas. And last but not least, Charlie Segona, which of course is not here tonight. He is our partner with ASIL Grant Services and worked with us very closely to make sure that this was a big success. Thank you again for your time and effort. The Renew America Schools Prize is another example of how Wichita Public Schools is keeping our promise to the community to secure outside funding to assist with those budget shortfalls we might come across. Thank you for your time this evening and for your continued support of innovative ideas. We will take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. That's a great team that had such a positive outcome of this. You mentioned the master plan and that this is in alignment with the master plan. So, are we able to deduct, and maybe the superintendent can answer this, that $15 million from the requested bond issue when it comes to pass? The $15 million from that total?
Well, the direction from the board, the last time we talked, was to lower the mill rate to the 7.5 and leave it at the 450. This does offset the deferred maintenance number, that big number of $1.2 billion that even if we were to pass the bond issue, we'd still have a significant deficit. So, this would come out of that part of it, but not the bond.
Okay. I want to, yes, and I, let me just put this away for me. Can you all hear me? I'm thrilled that the district has done this. I mentioned grant writing before. Money is out there for us. We just need to have effective grant writers and a team that Holly, you said that you have. So, thank you so much for all of the work that you and your team have done to secure this negotiated agreement. Kudos to you guys. Thank you.
So, this is wonderful. Congratulations. I would love to know the, I would say, the participation or how did each one of the individuals that you named, and they may have been organizations, but how did they contribute? Because I'm very much interested in community relationships, and that's what I heard. I heard us actually reaching out into the community as well as grasping our own expertise here at our district and working collectively. So, how did that look?
So, part of this grant actually has a community benefits agreement that we will, we have started, we've started to put together the piece of that. So, we would be remiss if we did not work with the Richard Roberts Community Benefits Agreement for that process. Tadana Neal in my department is very.
Richard Roberts.
Yeah, Richard Robich, thank you. Thank you. They were, they have been integral in helping us build this and will be continuing to kind of put the teeth to that. So, Phase 2 is also a part of building that agreement. We will also have a very focused effort on working with the school communities so that they are, one, aware that this is happening, why it's happening, and what input they have to make their school communities better in the way of energy. So, there is outreach that we will be doing with them as well. We already work pretty closely with Christina Long with the Create Campaign and CML Collective. She is going to be helping us with vendor relationships. She already has a good foundation on vendors out there from disadvantaged communities that would be interested in this kind of work. And so she's going to help us make sure that they are prepared. They know the work is coming, what's going to be required, so that they're very aware of that bid process when it goes up, just to kind of help that local workforce as well.
And so, when I think about that type of a relationship and how it is that we can fold this into, add it on to embellish what we're going to be talking about with the master plan, I think about those relationships. So, will that carry over, and this may be a question for you, Mr. Superintendent, but will that carry over into how we look at, if indeed the board does vote to actually put the bond issue out, then to the public, and the public says yes, they vote yea for it, how do we go about identifying not the large contractors, but subcontractors, the other vendors that I'm hearing are associated with this type of venture? Do we have a mechanism for identifying who else we may be working with, or does that only flow through the large contractor?
I'll answer what I, a piece of that question, and Luke may need to answer the rest of it.
Oh, sure.
I think on the, on the pre, on the planning side of it, the answer is yes. Once we're, once we're kind of a go, if that's the direction you guys choose, we will assemble, you know, a bond steering committee that will have, you know, contractors, subcontractors, developers, all sorts of different type of constituents to help guide the work on the front end of things. I think your question's more on the back end of things, when we, there's actually work to be done.
When there's actually work to be done.
So, I'll let Luke.
Both. I mean, both. So, I appreciate that.
So, we discussed this at quite length. There are a lot of legislation at play when it comes to vendors and the bid process and everything like that. There's certain times where we can't do set-asides for anyone. It's just, it's just, you know, how an open bid is normally conducted. We are under this, under the guidance at the federal level, so some of ours might look a little bit different because they've been very clear that this is a federal project and we will abide by what CFR, we, this falls under CFR 200, so we will be abiding by their procurement rules. That's one of the conversations we've talked a lot about with Clint Guy specifically and his work with, you know, he's going to be helping us with the labor unions too and making sure they have opportunities for job training while this work is going on, as well with Christina and how we scope that work and ensure that, we're trying to make sure that there is a local workforce and people have an opportunity. So, those are ongoing conversations for this grant in particular.
Right. So, I understand that you're under the requirements of the federal government in terms of procuring. How about us? And maybe that's a Luke question.
So, I think the question is how, how do we, I guess, generate local interest in our projects?
Not only generate, but how do we actually identify who we're going to invite to solicit their actual engagement and what it is that we're going to be doing?
Yeah. So, we generally, when we have a lot of work that's going out the door, we have kind of vendor fairs, I guess, where we invite people to come in and learn about how to do work with the district. And so, with this and then potentially, bond work potentially on the horizon, you know, we would definitely be doing more of that engagement effort. But we also keep a pre-approved list of all of our kind of critical subcontractors, and we're always looking and reaching out to try to get more engagement and interest in our work. Grant work is always kind of tricky because we're required to comply with the federal guidelines and the prevailing wage rates and all that.
Correct.
There's a lot of the smaller companies, they don't really know how to navigate that. And so, we do our best to try to educate those smaller companies on how to do that and the ins and outs of it, but a lot of them just generally don't always have the desire to even jump through those hoops.
Sure.
So, we're a little limited on the contractor pool with work like this, but we always make it a priority to work with local contractors.
So, I love the fact that we are, that Christina Woods Long is one of our major go-tos in terms of looking at the vendor pool and ensuring that disadvantaged businesses, entrepreneurs would have an opportunity. So, this does go to set-asides and/or when we look at those federal procurement guidelines, the district, we do, yes or no, do we fall under that? Only if it's a federal grant where that's the overarching governing body, I guess.
Are we required to utilize a certain amount of disadvantaged businesses? Is that the question?
How do we look at that as a, as a community? How do we engage with the community along those lines?
As a district, I know that that's John Weese's area of expertise. He manages a whole committee on that. And I don't know what our exact goal is, but I know that that's the primary purpose of that committee is to try to reach a certain percentage of disadvantaged businesses that we work with. So, I'm sure that'll continue. I don't know if this grant has a requirement for disadvantaged businesses percentage-wise. So, but definitely something will be.
And who is John Weese?
Purchasing Director, yeah. Or Supply Chain Director.
Okay.
Good evening. Yes, we do run a committee that meets quarterly that really works to foster relationships with underrepresented communities. So, we work with the SBA as well as other community entities. It's been kind of a joint venture between us, the city of Wichita, and the county. So, again, we meet quarterly to kind of discuss ways that we can engage local businesses and also minority and women-owned businesses and veteran-owned business as a part of this work. And so, again, that is, that is continued work that we continue to look at. But again, there is a small group of community representatives because it's not only internal WPS employees that are a part of this group. We also have community members and members from some of these other agencies that we work with.
Thank you, Fabian. Thank you, Luke. Thank you.
Knock.
What's the estimated number of jobs that would be created through this grant?
Right now, it's yet to see. As we get through Phase 2 and see what the work is actually going to look like, because we don't know. Right now, we're focused on audits in Phase 2. And then, as we look at what that work is going to look like in Phase 3, when we actually do construction, I think we'd probably have a better, a better, more insight into what our impact on the jobs might be. We're not quite there yet because we don't know what that work should look like. I will note Christina Long, one of her roles in this, we have a set aside for the community engagement, and she will be looking, she'll be working alongside John. She already does. She's very aware of the work that we do. One of her main goals is to increase the number of those in the community that are on our eligible vendor list, what that looks like, how to get the paperwork, the documentation. So, whether it's a part of this particular grant where the focus is, it should trickle off into other projects that we do down the road because we're getting a more robust DBE kind of vendors in that pool of people coming in. So, I think the work that we are doing here is a very, very solid foundation for us to move forward. So, thank you.
And then for a clarification, the fact sheet says 22 schools. The agenda says 21 schools. It's 21 schools, right?
It is 21. We were working on this, if you guys remember May, facility, the Facility Master Planning process was in full swing, and we were right up to the deadline on getting this submitted. So, we were adding and taking schools off of that list, sometimes daily. And I think it was just, it was an oversight at that point in time. So, we are aware of that, the Department of Energy is too, and we may get to add an additional on there. It just depends on the scope of work and what it looks like.
And then a last question. I'm curious if there's a, if the district has like, like an energy efficiency dashboard or something of that matter, if, so I'd love to see it.
Yes, although we have several different platforms we utilize because we have several different control systems, and it's something we've tried to make one big, one platform, one pane of glass, so to speak. But it's a, it's a process and there's, there's a lot of ins and outs that go into that. But we have, that's what Justin and Damian do, in addition to many other things, but they monitor our energy use, look at those various different platforms. But that's one of our goals, is to get like a really simplified, easy snapshot of our energy use that we can share with the board and with members of the public and all that to kind of show, you know, what we've done over the years to save on energy expenses.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Since I'm up here, I just want to really lift this woman up. She's a spitfire and has done amazing work and deserves a ton of credit for all her hard work on it, so.
Wendy, part two?
Yeah, we have a part two. It's a pleasure, as we start the year, to start off by celebrating the success of our schools and leaders and school communities that are making a major impact on chronic absenteeism, something tied directly to the third goal in your strategic plan that you'll hear a little bit more about tonight. So, we, excuse me, Jennifer.
Sorry. It's on there. It's just decided not to go up there now. Hopefully, it will pop up. There we go.
There we go. So, we have elected this evening to introduce you to the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school that have decreased chronic absenteeism by the greatest degree. And you will have a chance, two of those principals are here tonight. One of them was not able to be here. And Brandon Johnson from our secondary office and Sheri Frazi from our elementary office will tell you more and introduce you to them. I did also want to give you a heads-up. September is Attendance Awareness Month. And you will see through a variety of channels, a campaign that we launched last year that we will continue into this year called Attendance Equals Opportunity. So, I want to call that to your attention. It's all part of the same consideration, which is supporting community awareness, supporting our schools as they support our families to make the connections that will contribute to chronic absenteeism continuing to fall. So, without further ado, I'd like to invite Mr. Johnson and Ms. Frazi forward, as well as Ms. Cooper from Southeast and Mr. Escarpita from Horace Mann.
Welcome, Brandon.
Hey. Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, distinguished members of the Board of Education, Brandon Johnson, Secondary Office Executive Director, and Dr. Sheri Frazi, Executive Director, Elementary Office. Thank you for having us tonight. We're just here to talk about chronic absenteeism and why it's important. And like Ms. Johnson talked about, September is Attendance Awareness Month, and we want to make sure that we're intentional about how we can start good habits early in the school year, because if you're present, you can learn. If you're not present, you can't learn. And all of our kids matter, each one of them, so we want to make sure we educate as we go.
Good afternoon. As you said, I'm Sheri Frazi, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. Chronic absenteeism is a silent national crisis in our schools, so it's really important that we start to decrease the number of chronically absent students in our district. Students who miss two days or more of school every month, or 10% of school are chronically absent. For every two days that they miss, for every one day that they miss, they're two days behind in school, and they're 20% lower than their peers by the end of the year. So, we have three schools that are changing that trajectory for our district, and we're here to recognize them tonight. For elementary schools, it's Seltzer Elementary, and Carol Dunn could not be here tonight, but she and her team have done a fabulous job of starting in September, starting early with their chronic absentee kids. And the progress that they have made is in 2022, '23, they had 33.2% of students who are chronically absent. They were able to decrease that by 37.6%, which is huge. So, in 2023, '24, they're now at 20.7% of chronically absent students. So, we want to congratulate them for a job well done.
Up next, we have the principal from a dual-language Horace Mann K-8, the principal, Mr. Joel Escarpita.
Welcome, Joel.
Hello, everybody, and good evening, Board of Education members and the Wichita Public Schools community. My name is. My name is Joel Escarpita, and I'm the Principal of Horace Mann Dual Language Magnet. I had way more words planned, but I'm going to go ahead and reduce them just a little bit for you all. I am happy to report that for the 23-24 school year, our average daily attendance for elementary and middle school was 94.7%. Thank you. And when I do think of Horace Mann and what we intentionally do to increase safety and belonging and attendance, I think of family engagement. And I mean that in every sense of the word. Students, parents, staff, community members, businesses, and volunteers, all in the mix, together to create a very strong, family-oriented Horace Mann community. We all work together to make this school work for us, and we participate in a range of opportunities that provide us with a greater sense of ownership of our school. Primarily through the work of our PTO, Family Engagement Team, and School Improvement Team, we plan multiple opportunities throughout the year for our school community. We have numerous volunteer opportunities that, for starters, include the participation in our PTO. There's plenty of opportunities to help fundraise as well, including the infamous Turkey Drive and our yearly Five from Five fundraiser. We also make fundraising fun by inviting our families to nights out that include Urban Arts or the Urban Air Carousel Skate Night and All-Star Adventures throughout the year. We also plan monthly family nights and events with cultural significance or relevance to our magnet theme. Some of these include the Day of the Dead Family Night, Gancitos Con El Breakfast, Conchas Conea Breakfast, with mariachi included, of course, and our Spring Carnival. We also invite families to enjoy time with us at other events like the Family Dance Night and Talent Show and our Arts and Culture Night. And really, in the end, we truly support the idea that the more we are able to create opportunities for our students and families to have positive experiences in our school or with our staff, the more our students and families will feel an increased sense of safety and belonging. We enjoy showing our families our good side as often as possible. Leveraging a functioning PTO and Family Engagement Team to promote positive experiences will in turn develop trusting, positive relationships with our personnel and in turn increase average daily attendance, as we have seen. Thank you for the opportunity to share our successes. I wish everyone a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
It's hard to beat that speech, but if you look at the data up there, they went from 14.2% of students being chronically absent in 22-23, all the way down to 6.6%. That is over 50% reduction in students that are chronically absent. Everything that Mr. Escarpita talked about is true. It's a school that I get to supervise. It is a family. If you have not been to Horace Mann, I strongly recommend all of you get to go out there and visit it because they will treat you like you're one of their own. That's a great place. Next up, we have the one, the only, the head principal, the lady in charge, excellent principal, Ms. Claudia Cooper. Welcome, Bobby.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education members, community partners, and friends. I am Claudia Cooper, the proud principal of Southeast High School. And our attendance rate for this last year was nearly 87%, which was the same percent of students who felt safe at Southeast, according to the Safety and Belonging Survey. The way we accomplished this was actually twofold. First, we made it our mission to hold all students' high expectations of being in class, on time, out of the halls, out of the bathrooms, and in the classroom learning. Additionally, we worked diligently to respond to all student issues immediately and provide accountability and consistency. Second, we focused on building positive relationships with students and encouraging the staff, especially our admin team, who were all new, to interact with all students in the hallways, at lunch, and whenever they had a chance, calling kids by their names. It seems like a very simple thing, but that is very huge in making kids feel like they belong. As the year went on, the trust was developed among our students, which I attribute to building a sense of both safety and belonging. This was confirmed during the year when we would speak with our students to gauge how they felt things were going, and it reflected in our district survey. Things were different and much better. These changes did wonders to encourage our students to come to school because they felt safe in the hallways and in the classrooms. And this was entirely due to the efforts of our faculty, our staff, security, and the assistant principals who helped make the vision happen. Thank you very much.
So, again, not taking away from the speech, but the data speaks for itself. Over 50% of our students were chronically absent in 22-23 at Southeast High School. You think about that, that's over 1,000 students that missed more than at least 10% of their school year. The next year, Ms. Cooper took over, first-year principal, she got that all the way down to 39%. So, her team, her teachers, the parents, the security team, everybody that works at Southeast gets credit for that. It takes everybody to do that. So, congratulations again to Southeast High School. Okay, Dr. Frazee and I will take any questions you might have about chronic absenteeism or anything we talked about this evening.
Hazel?
It's not a question. I just would like to commend all of the people that are here today receiving this award. It's a testament to your leadership. I know you talk about all the people that are involved in making this happen, but it wouldn't happen without your leadership. So, we appreciate your leadership and we commend you for your accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. And we just mentioned the top three today, but we also appreciate all the schools that reduce their chronic absenteeism. Oh, Kathy?
What did you guys do to change your data? I mean, because I think the other buildings in our district would benefit from knowing about this.
I mean, for us, really, it's just been a much more intentionality behind creating opportunities for our families to come into our school. While we used to do that, we've always done it. But, we've really been working a lot harder through our PTO and through our Family Engagement Team to make sure that just throughout the year, every month, there's multiple opportunities for staff to be with parents and with students. And we just try to create as much variety as possible where it's not just, you know, the one thing that we have to look forward to a month, but there's a myriad throughout the month. And so, we keep that momentum really going throughout the school year. It is a really fun place to be. It's a very family-oriented place to be. And so, we want to be there. So, I think the more that we do creating opportunities for our community, then the more that they will come.
So, Mr. Superintendent, is this something that these successful leaders can share and perhaps even do in in-service on something like this for our other leaders in our building?
Probably a question for you guys as much as possible.
Just to kind of double down, that's, actually, that's what we do every month at PLA. We highlight things like these schools. Dr. Hatfield does a great job. In this room, we actually bring people up and we have principals talk about, what have you done to improve attendance? What have you done to improve community building? And the principals teach each other about those things. And we try to shred, we try to spread those good news across the entire system. Because when you think about 90-plus attendance centers, there's lots of things that we can learn from each other. We're all better together, that's for sure.
Thanks. I'd like to hear from Mrs. Cooper.
I would agree that a lot of what we've done was very intentional. We came in and decided that that was going to be kind of our first phase, was getting kids in class. One of the things that we are unique in is that there's not a lot of places to skip when you get to Southeast High School. So, you know, there's a lot of fields out there. So, trying to keep the kids out of the fields and keep them out of the bathrooms and keep encouraging them to go to class because that's where learning is taking place. I tell them all the time, I don't give diplomas for hanging out in bathrooms. So, that helped as well. But, I think too, us also being very intentional in trying to get to know the kids. We were a brand-new admin team. And I told the admin team when they first came in, like, wear your walking shoes. You won't get to sit a lot because you're going to be out. Your kids need to see you. You need to see them. You need to start calling names. You know, it's, like I said, it's a very simple thing, but it makes a huge difference when you can say a kid's name and you know who they are. And when you don't see them and you say, hey buddy, I haven't saw you in a few days. What's been going on? So, those are the things that we did, and I think that that truly is what has made the biggest impact at Southeast High School.
Great. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do have a question. I know as a board, we tried to support this chronic absenteeism problem with that software that we purchased that follows up with text messages and that sort of thing. They're talking about just purely cultural changes and relationships. Does that tool assist any at all, just being able to spend less time on those admin tasks? Is that worth continuing as an expenditure to help in the admin part of solving this problem?
We've yet to use it because it hasn't been a tool that we've had at our school, but I am really excited to have it. And we already have been working on developing a plan to incorporate it and improve our numbers even more. While we are or have been working on our culture, I still think that there's, you know, different ways to attack this problem and make it better. And I do think with a tool like that, it's going to increase the communication from our school with our parents greatly so that we can improve. And, you know, I know we ended up at like 6-point-something with chronic absenteeism, but I think that number could even be improved further with tools such as these.
Yeah. Well, clearly, the leadership and culture, I mean, clearly, and relationships, we know those are the most important things. But, sometimes to save time on administrative tasks gives you more time than to put into students and relationships and culture building. So, I just was curious whether, from your perspective, that was a good thing for us to continue supporting as a board.
So, I can kind of answer that. The three that got recognized, ironically, none of them were part of the pilot last year.
Ah, okay.
But, the pilot showed decreases for the buildings that did have it. Kind of solving two different issues. You heard these guys address, school-wide, knowing every student's name, creating, you know, excitement for parents and a whole school culture. Everyday Labs really targeted those kids that are missing a lot of school, trying to nail down why they're missing school. So, a little bit different tool, but I think Joel makes a great point. Man, you know, think of how much better the number might be, you know, if we even have that other tool in the tool belt. So.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Julie, Melody?
I just wanted, I just couldn't let you leave the building without saying how impressed I am. And it's not even, the word is probably not impressed. It's just, it's so beneficial from a student perspective to develop that relationship, to build that culture, to actually become that family. Because, quite honestly, some of them do not have that. Not all. I mean, paraphrably, the majority of them do, but some of them do not. And so, when you're able to create that network, it makes all the difference. And you can see it. I've been in your building before, and it's a joy. You know, you can feel the joy when you walk through the doors almost. Just your front staff emits it. And of course, I've been over at Southeast, and you all are just everywhere. You know, someone was, when I was in the building, I had somebody tell me, it got back to me that, you know, I saw your, because it actually was someone I'm related to. So, I saw your grandmother. She just was kind of looking around. And I'm like, I am, because I'm in awe, just watching people work. So, I just had to give you, you know, just that tidbit because it matters. And obviously, you can see it. So, thank you. Thank you for all you do. And I know other buildings are working hard. I know they are. So, very good. It's good to hear this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Hello. Can you hear me okay? Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and distinguished BOE members. It's been, so far, a pretty good start to the school year. Our educators were really excited to see all of the students back in the buildings and smiles and at in-service. They were all really looking forward to the students being back at school. I know that we have a shared goal of ensuring the best possible environment for both students and staff. And so, the first thing I want to talk about tonight is some of the facility maintenance issues that we've been noticing in our schools to start the year. There have been some real problems with air conditioning at several different buildings. Some of our classrooms were reaching close to 90 degrees last week at Trusdale and a few other buildings. These have been resolved, but it did take a couple of days. There were lots of different, we were getting calls, emails. And so, we had that happen last year as well. It does speak to some of the maintenance concerns and needs in our schools. And so, when the room is 90 degrees, our staff can't, our students can't learn. It's not an optimal learning environment. So, I just wanted to kind of point that out. We still are having, you know, I've talked about this a couple of times before, and I know I've talked with the superintendent about this, but we have middle-school gyms that don't have air conditioning as well. And unfortunately, I think what is probably what bothers me the most about that, a lot of the surrounding school districts, the suburbs, they have air conditioning in their school gyms. And so, practices, it's harder for that to happen, harder for classes to happen when it's this hot. They have to move into a classroom or go in the hallways. And so, that's just kind of something that I think needs to be addressed in any future master facility plans. I know that working together on these maintenance concerns is essential for providing an optimal learning environment for all of our students. I noticed that the facility master plan is on the agenda for tonight, and I'd like to urge the board and the district to maintain clear communication with staff regarding this plan. I think it's important that we work together to ensure that staff are informed about any potential impacts of a possible bond vote and what those possible outcomes could mean for our staff and students. So, Diane came by the other day to our meeting, and Melody came and spoke with our educators. And I know that was one thing that they talked with Melody about was, I want to know what this means for, like, a lot of our teachers have students that go to Wichita Public Schools. What does this mean for my family? What does this mean for my school? What does this look like? So, we just want that communication piece to be very clear. I'd like to acknowledge the district's effort to manage increasing enrollment in the elementary and high schools. We know that we've had to move some teachers around, and that's really difficult because schools started. They've had Meet the Teacher Night. Their classrooms are done. They've worked with their team. I spoke with a teacher, actually, right before I arrived here. She has been at the one school for over 30 years, and she is close to retiring. And she was moved after school started to a new school because of need. And so, it's, you know, really, really hard. I know the students, they just got to know their teacher, meet the families, and now they're being pulled somewhere where they're needed, which is so important because of those class sizes. But also, I just want to take a minute just to recognize that those kindergarten teachers, their rooms to get them all ready and then take it all down and leave someplace that they've called home, it's really, really hard. But, we are glad that you are looking at those class sizes because 30 kindergartners somewhere and then somewhere else, you know, 14 or 15, it's not right for our kids. I'd like to also talk about high schools. We've been told that some of the high schools are not allowing overage classes, and we think that that might help with some of the class sizes in high schools. We have a lot of diverse needs, our students do. We have a lot of large class sizes from some of the high schools. We're hearing with the increased enrollment. So, that might be something that maybe you could look at. We know that smaller class sizes are crucial for meeting the varied needs of our students, and that leads to better educational outcomes. Again, I just want to reiterate the importance of working together to address any of these concerns. And I'm confident that together, we can create a better future for both our students and our educators. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Patrick, next item.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
Welcome, Esau.
Good evening, everybody. How are you this evening? Good. Well, you know, when the school year started, I was concerned because I had a bunch of phone calls. People were worried about the new way we're doing things and how things are going to work out. And I'm happy to say, now that we're in, you know, the second week of school, really, a lot of the fears that people had have been calmed down, and they feel like things are going good. I'm getting a lot of good feedback about that. So, really, there's not a lot that I have to report today except for, you know, everybody is happy to be back. is happy to be back at school and air conditioning, air conditioning, air conditioning. So, all right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Esau. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Public Hearing on the 2024-25 Intent to Exceed the Revenue Neutral Rate.
Do we, Walt, did you say you wanted to speak at this time or at the public communication time? Did you say you wanted to speak now or at the public communication time? I forget, I'm sorry. Okay. But I will open it up if there's anyone at the public. We normally suspend the rules on signing up for revenue neutral, since this is the big one of the public communications of the year. Is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak to us about the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate? Thank you. If not, we'll go ahead and go into the hearing.
I can't. Okay. Susan, oh yeah, do you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. The public hearing on the intent to exceed the revenue, revenue neutral rate is now closed, and do you need a motion at this time? Okay, excellent. Patrick, next item, then.
Next item, under Finance, 2024-25 Budget, Authorization to Publish Notice of Hearing.
And I apologize for fumbling that a little bit. I was a little confused on that. We've only done this four years, but I'm finally getting the hang of it, maybe.
Okay. Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Beilefeld, Vice President Albert, members of the board. I think I just had Patrick pass out the shortest PowerPoint copies I've ever provided the board, so hopefully that's an indication that we'll slide right on through this. But since there were no questions raised during the revenue neutral rate hearing, obviously that's the action that we are looking at tonight as we hit our last two steps in the fiscal year '25 budget development process. Tonight was the hearing to address any issues related to where the mill levy rate is set. We will be providing you a recommendation to adopt a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate tonight, and then we will also be asking the board to approve the notice of the budget hearing to be held on September 9th, with September 9th hopefully being the final closeout. That, at that meeting, we will again spend quite a bit of time going back through the process, covering needs assessments again, and then the state assessment and the questions that the board has to answer. That's required by statute to be presented at the budget, at the meeting where the budget is approved. So we'll have to go through that again on the 9th. So for tonight, we wanted to keep this presentation very short. So it is recommended that the board approve Resolution 2024-05 entitled "A Resolution Expressing the Property Tax, the Property Taxation Policy of USD 259 Wichita Cedric County, Kansas With Respect to the Revenue Neutral Tax Rate for Financing the Annual Budget for 2024-25." This resolution indicates the board's authorization to levy property taxes exceeding the revenue neutral rate as calculated by the Cedric County Clerk for the 2024-25 school year. And so I will, we could stop, pause there for that vote, perhaps?
I would move that the board approve Resolution 2024-05 entitled "A Resolution Expressing the Property Tax Policy of USD 259 Wichita Cedric County, Kansas With Respect to the Revenue Neutral Rate Tax Rate for Financing the Annual Budget of '24," and the resolution indicates the board's authorization of a levy of proper taxes exceeding the revenue neutral rate calculated for '24-25. Moved by Stan and seconded by Diane. Any discussion? Kathy?
How much did we say we were going to exceed that?
We reduced our mill rate by .6 in this budget year.
I tell you what, ma'am, let me, let me, let me do a suspension here. We have a motion on the floor, we'll come back into discussion, but since it's very, very imperative that we've always allowed people to discuss the revenue neutral rate, and it's not always 100% clear on when they sign up or not, so this is one case that we've always suspended the rules. So I'm going to invite you to the podium, and you're more than well, if you would state your name and give us your thoughts.
Yes, my name is Mary Folcarl.
Oh, I'm sorry, and you have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. I'm requesting that, due to the fact that you're going to do an NRN rate increase, that you put a freeze on all the property taxes and lands for this year because the public school system, there'd be no, no increase for the teacher's salary. College, some people are working out there and they said they're lucky to keep their jobs. We're seeing where there's a lot of bigger companies that are letting their employees go. The medical system is doing more. Of the nurses and stuff that they're not hiring them, they're contracting them. The elderly are having trouble with not only a property tax increase and then also the neutral revenue increase. And Kelly, Governor Kelly, said that she wanted to make this the best state that people could raise their family in. Mayor, Mayor Lily Wu was not in favor of a lot of the budget. And our sweet spot used to be a couple of years ago, that if Cedric County could come up to 500,000 people, then we could get major companies to come in. That would be more jobs, more revenue, and things would go smoother. But the problem is, when you're a big business, if you're looking at a state or county to build in or trust, you can handle one year of this increase over and outside the budget. But by the time you get two years of it, they're looking to see if, if this is something that is really solid enough that they want to come in and be a part of. So we need to do something to not only keep us, the people that live here, here, but any businesses that want to accumulate and come in and make us a better state to be in, comfortable with it. And I'm not certain if that makes any difference for there to be a voice input in this, but I thought I'd throw it out there. Thank you for hearing me.
We appreciate you taking the time to come talk to us. There is a motion on the floor and discussion. Oh, Diane, sorry. I thought you were waving a knock.
Hi, Knock. Susan, could you come to the podium? So to try to answer some of the questions that were just proposed, tax rates, so we are a taxing entity.
Correct.
And we can control the mill rate.
Correct.
And we, our, our mill rate is based off of property values, and that is something that we do not have control over.
Correct. We do not, we are not involved in the valuation process at all. So the only thing within our control, and we don't even fully control all of it, is the school level mill rate for the general fund, the supplemental general fund, the bond and interest mill rate, the special liability. Did I forget one?
So.
We have the pieces that we control, and then there's, the county has theirs, the city has theirs, but the valuation process is not ours.
So the portion that we do control, we are decreasing?
Correct.
Okay. I just want. Right, so, so the portion that we can control, we are decreasing?
Right, we didn't full, we were not fully revenue neutral. We shared that with the board, right? We were able to come down. We came down on the bond and interest. We, we used some one-time cash to buy down some of the supplemental general, but we still ended up going up a little bit there. The overall with the changes in the state law and the general fund, the increase on if your property values increased was very small. We had given the example on a $200,000 home, our share of that increase of taxes would be $5 increase. If you, if you were, your property did not increase, you would actually be $90, you would have $90 of tax savings on that same property because of what the state action and our action to reduce the mill levy.
And through conversations, we've had many, many listening sessions over the last two years, and one of the things that the community has said repeatedly is that they want to make sure that staff is compensated well. We expect a lot of staff, and so can you, do you remember the, the cost of our wage package that we offered to staff this year?
The dollars spent were about $28 million in wages. It was a 6.7% package for all the benefited groups.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, that kind of leads us to our, our second to the last slide tonight, which is the, that final look at the fiscal year '25 proposed budget. The Code 99 that we will publish in both the Wichita Eagle and the Derby Informer sets the fiscal year '25 budget for USD 259 at $970 million and change with a mill rate of 51.354, which is .6 mills less than it was last year. Highlights in this budget includes the fact that it is balanced for fiscal year '25. We did use some one-time funds in order to achieve that balancing. The base aid per student is now 5,378. We did reduce expenditures by $27.8 million with our budget priorities focused on critical staffing and wages. That wage package, as I just stated, it was a 6.7% compensation package improvement for benefit employee groups. And again, we are at the lowest overall mill rate that we've been in 14 years. And unless there's any additional questions from the board tonight, it is recommended that the board establish 6:00 PM September 9th, 2024 at North High School, fingers crossed, for the public hearing for the 2024-25 budget.
I, go ahead.
I'll move that administration recommend the board that we establish that 6:00 PM on September 9th, 2024 at North High School for the public hearing for the 2024-2025 budget.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Knock. Discussion? Though this is just to set the hearing. Okay. We'll take a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that motion carries seven zero.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Sometimes you need a 14-pager, sometimes you need a one-pager. And we're, we appreciate that you are, you know the difference, thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Communications.
We have one speaker signed up tonight, Walt Chapel. Welcome, Walt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Great to be with you folks tonight. You're making a lot of big decisions. And I understand the problem that you face as many times is getting enough information that's accurate, and you have a chance to verify. Now, this is an email that I sent out to you this afternoon regarding the master plan. And there's actually no urgency at all that I can see to go ahead and approving this this evening unless you have a desire to go ahead and make sure that you can get it on the November ballot. Now, I contacted the State Department of Education this afternoon, and they verified that you have a timetable. First, you've got to get it on their agenda for the Board of Education, and that can be done in the October meeting. Then you have a 21-day timeframe between when the board goes ahead and approves and you say we're going to have an election. That provides enough time for the people in the city to go ahead and try to get their act together and decide how they're going to vote. So you have time between now and November to put this on the ballot when there's actually enough people to make a difference. There's very little people, folks, that come out and vote like in February or March. I understood that might be one of the options that you're looking at. Now, that might get 10% to vote for you, but it certainly doesn't represent this community and how they would feel about raising. Now, the link I've provided in the email is actually a good summary of what happened in 2008. When I served in the State Board of Education, we had this opportunity to go through this whole process then, and there was actually no improvement whatsoever in student achievement. In fact, when I looked at the figures today, we have a new school at Ortiz that's up on North Ammonia or North Arcansas Avenue. Ortiz is 88% of their students levels of one and two last year. That used to be North Arcansas Avenue School, and it was torn down, rebuilt. At Mueller, you had a school that had over $2 million in renovations put in over on 24th Street. That school, you built a brand-new one over by the rec center. Okay? The problem is, there's actually no improvement at all in the student achievement in that school. Ortiz is listed as aerospace and engineering, but actually it only has 12, or excuse me, 6% of the kids at level three and four. 94% are one and two, just not making it. So what my concern is, that we assume, as was provided in 2008, that we're going to have a lot of improvement in student achievement, they're going to learn a lot of new skills. That didn't happen. But we spent $430 million. Now, the people behind us here, Hutton and the architects that you see here, they come to every meeting, just like they did before in 2008. But this year, instead of 25%, which was all the buttons we wore back then, as you remember, the yellow buttons, it's only 2% now. The state legislature was getting so hit with all the extra bond issues, they just said, wait a minute, we can't afford to keep doing this. They were up to $6 billion in state money that the legislature was having to pay out to try to backstop all these bond issues that were coming forward. So, my point is simple. Please do not approve this this year. Figure out what can be done to get the student behavior under control, let the kids have a chance to start behaving more reasonably and with respect for their teachers, and let's find out how we can deal with this absenteeism, make sure they're actually learning something, get these scores up, and then come back next year if you think you're going to need to have new buildings. But tearing down a bunch of buildings, closing schools, we're saying consolidate, that means closing, doesn't it? That doesn't work. You're not going to improve the student achievements that you want. So please, either put it on November ballot or put it off a year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Walt. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Education, WPS Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan.
So Deputy Superintendent Gil Alvarez is here, and what we're going to do tonight is somewhat of a recap of what we passed last fall, last December for the strategic plan, and then what we've updated out throughout the spring. But we want to start the year off right, want to start the year with a big overview of what our plans are. And I think you'll see between Gil's presentation and the facilities master plan presentation, how this does all tie together for student outcome, so.
Take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent Beilefeld, and good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, and members of the board. Vice President Albert, and members of the board. As we have begun an amazing start to the school, school year, I'm excited to introduce our Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan, which will guide the Wichita Public Schools' efforts over the next five years. This comprehensive plan reflects our commitment to equipping each student with the skills, knowledge, and opportunities they need to thrive in a complex and ever-changing world. In this overview, we will review our strategic priorities and key goals designed to foster a supportive and innovative learning environment. Together, we will work towards a future where all students are prepared for success in college, career, and life. Our partnership and dedication are essential as we strive to make our vision a reality and ensure that each student is, in fact, future-ready. During this presentation, I plan to share videos that helps capture the pride and energy of our WPS faculty and staff, as well as share details of our strategic plan. I'd like to begin with sharing some highlights of our Rally on the River event that happened during Teacher Report Week on August 6th, which marked the official kickoff of our strategic plan. And I know some of you were, were actually there as well to witness it. This exciting event brought together our community, educators, students, and partners to celebrate the launch of this five-year plan. Watch as we unite in our commitment to empowering each student and explore the energy and enthusiasm that set the stage for this journey. The rally was not just a celebration, but a powerful demonstration of our shared vision and dedication to shaping a bright future for all of our students. Together, we're taking the first steps toward making our strategic plan a reality and ensuring that each student in Wichita Public Schools is equipped for success. So enjoy the highlights of this event, you may want to turn around and, and see the video on the screen, and want you to feel the excitement of this new chapter.
We're here today at Riverfront Stadium, having a rally on the river, one of the first events in a long time that brought all of the staff at WPS together for a kickoff celebration to start the year. We're hoping everyone gets energized, puts a smile on their face, for a great school year. What we tried to do was celebrate teachers, get everyone excited about the great teachers we have. We did some fun games with staff on the field, and then we rolled out our new strategic plan and talked about our goals for the year, our three goals of student achievement, life, college, career readiness, and safety and belonging.
Today, I will have the privilege to be the emcee, the host, bring energy to this awesome, special day. We wanted to celebrate and to bring energy to 8,000 schoolteachers, staff, everybody to just celebrate the kickoff of this fun school year.
For a year or so, we've been planning this event, and really, the idea is to make the big feel small. We all work in a really big system that sometimes feels disconnected. Everyone belongs in Wichita Public Schools, we want them to feel like they belong and they're connected. So by putting everybody in the same spot, where you can actually see all the different schools, SSC, IST, all of us together in one place, to get energized, to get excited for the school year, that was the whole idea. This wouldn't have been possible without Credit Union of America, they sponsored the entire event. They donated $15,000 to get this thing off the ground. First student donated the cost of the buses, so this, this event was free to the district. So hopefully, we can continue this event in the future with sponsorship like that to celebrate our staff for a great year.
I'm not going to lie to you, I have never seen that many people stay engaged for that long and bring so much energy, from the dance cam moments, to the sing-alongs, to everybody just bringing energy, I loved it all.
Just from the energy in the crowd, I feel like it was, it was a great response. You know, the dance cam, the dance contest was, blew me away, the, the way the staff got into it. They were cheering for their teammates, they were cheering for the, the games on the field. I saw a lot of smiles, I saw a lot of cheering and energy, so I think it's going to be a great year because we did this event.
I've hosted a lot, I mean, we did, I did College Game Day at University of Kansas. I've done big games for Wichita State University. But this one right here, I think it was most impactful because it, it wasn't sports, right? It was teachers, it was people that actually make a difference in not only my life, in our future kids' lives, and, and everybody's lives. So to see that they were all so motivated and they all felt important, this probably was, you know, top, top two or three events I've ever done.
Well, I hope that all of our staff feel connected, they feel, they walked away with a smile on their face, and they feel like this is a district that they want to be a part of, it's somewhere that they belong.
Yes. What, what an amazing event, I just have to say thank you to all certified and classified staff, bus drivers, everybody that was involved, bringing the energy, they showed up and showed out, no doubt. And they really bought into the fun and, and made it what it was, a great event. And I also want to thank all the committee members, the logistics, as well as the program team that put it all together to make it happen, what a great way to start the school year. So as we move forward, as you see on the screen, it's an upside-down triangle, but I call it a funnel. So this funnel shows the systems alignment from state vision and outcomes to our building and department goals. So let me take you through this funnel and what it, what it actually means, so you can see the alignment. Starting at the very top is the Kansas State Board of Education outcomes. And the Kansas State Board of Education in October 2015 announced a new vision for education in Kansas called Kansans Can, giving direction for a more student-focused system and resources for individual success, which included the Kansas State Board of Education outcomes. Kansans, at the time, demanded, and probably still feel the same way, demanded higher standards in academic skills, as well as employability and citizenship skills, and the need to move away from a one-size-fits-all system that relies exclusively on state assessments. So the Kansas State Board of Education outcomes were created. And those outcomes include social-emotional growth, kindergarten readiness, individual plans of study, high school graduation, and post-secondary effectiveness and success. And you'll see within our strategic plan how we touch and hit on these state board outcomes as well. The next layer, after the state board outcome, is the KISA fundamentals, or what KISA stands for, the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation. This is our accreditation process that all districts in Kansas must follow the process so they can be fully accredited. And in that particular process, it is grounded in these four fundamentals: structured literacy, standards alignment, balanced assessment, and quality instruction. And some, some people will say, when you see, and here in just a minute, we'll talk about some of the data too, what, what are some of the foundational reasons why we're seeing growth and progress in our data? It is, is really around the foundational, these four fundamentals, which are actually part of our accreditation process, which is outstanding. So structured literacy refers to the approach to teaching literacy that acknowledges the value of both word recognition and oral and written language comprehension. Standards alignment refers to clearly-defined student learning expectations aligned to the Kansas State standards and supported with evidence-based instruction. A balanced assessment system refers to a collection of varying types of assessments that provide feedback regarding instruction and student learning, which helps also provide students that may, we need to fill some gaps for, and they get put into interventions in order to fill those gaps. And then high-quality instruction refers to the implementation of evidence-based lesson design that reflects high expectations, meaningful student engagement, and learning activities aligned to the Kansas State standards. This quality instruction, I always feel that we have the most talented teaching staff in the state of Kansas, they do a lot of those things to engage students in the learning, providing to fill those gaps, even if it's class-wide interventions, before some of those students have to get to, to specific, individualized interventions. So shout out to our teachers who do a phenomenal job of really focusing on high-quality instruction. So that's the KISA fundamentals. Next is our strategic plan, which I'm going to get into in more detail here in just a little bit. But our strategic plan is layered, as you can see, is layered from student success, the outcomes themselves. But with those outcomes is the measure, and I'm going to, I'm going to take you through each one of those, school one, two, and three here in just a little bit. Underneath those outcomes is the interim goals by level. So there's interim goals for high school, middle school, elementary, and even system support. And then under those, there's some specific action steps, and you're going to see how all those align to a school improvement process that our elementary office and secondary office, they do with their principals and the buildings, so they can provide the necessary alignment from our strategic plan all the way down to their building and department goals themselves, which is another system, I think, that is created that really aligns to why and how our strategic plan really focuses us on the right work. We are focused on three core student success outcomes that are essential to our mission of ensuring each student's success. These outcomes reflect our dedication to fostering a supportive and enriching educational experience. The first goal, increase academic achievement and graduation rates, we are committed to enhancing academic performance and ensuring that all students achieve their highest potential and graduate prepared for their next steps and what they choose to do after high school. The second one, prepare students for life, college, and career success. Our goal is to equip students with the skills, knowledge, and experiences necessary to excel in higher education, their chosen careers, and their future lives. The third one, create and enhance safety and belonging. We strive to build a safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment where each student feels valued and supported. These outcomes will guide our efforts and drive our initiatives to make a lasting impact on our lives, on our, excuse me, on our students' lives and their futures. So starting with goal number one, you see the actual outcome itself, but with each outcome and each goal, there is a measure. And for this particular measure for goal number one is increase graduation rate from 79.2% to 85% by May of 2029. So that's the five-year plan. Here in a little bit, we'll talk about our milestones, which are the year-one goals that we still, because we, we know that we have to look, are we meeting? Or are we headed in the right direction to meet our goal by 2029? So that's why we created some year-one, but I'll, I'll talk about that here in just a minute. So next up, so let's watch how goal number one is driving efforts to increase academic achievement and graduation rates for every student in the Wichita Public Schools.
In Wichita Public Schools, we're committed to student success. Our mission and the first goal of our strategic plan is to boost academic achievement and graduation rates. For high schools, we're raising the bar. By spring 2025, we're aiming for more students to score a 21 or higher on the ACT or achieve silver or higher on the ACT work keys. That means more opportunities, more scholarships, and more pathways to success. Middle schools, we've got your back too. Our goal, to decrease the percentage of students scoring a 1 on the Kansas State Math Assessment. Let's conquer those math challenges together. And for our youngest learners, we are laser-focused on third-grade reading proficiency. By spring 2025, we're aiming to decrease the percentage of students scoring a 1 on the state assessment, because strong readers become strong leaders. There's more, our dedicated instructional staff is growing. We're boosting the number of fully qualified teachers from 87% to 90% by May 2025, because great teachers inspire greatness. Together, we'll write success stories, one classroom at a time.
So let's look at some data, where are we now specifically? So I wanted to share, and, and help celebrate some of the great progress that we are making in regards to reading and literacy, since that has been our focus. What you see on the screen is specifically reading proficiency on state assessment. What that means is students scoring a 3 and a 4, 3 and a 4 or a 4 on the state assessments in particular. So if you look at all grades, just so you can see how, how to look through this, the all grades row, we had about 18.75% of our students in the '22-'23 school year. And preliminary data for last year, a state assessment was 19.9%, which gave us a 1.2 percentage point increase in gain from our state assessment, which is the momentum and the track that we want to be in. I do want you to notice, as you look down, you see there's a lot of green, except for grade 6. So every single grade level that took the state assessment actually increased and showed progress and growth on our state assessment for reading proficiency, which is 3s and 4s. And that, that is, that is amazing, and a tribute to all our staff and teachers that really are focused in on making sure that our students are learning to read and reading to learn as well. I do want to highlight two specific ones that had a higher increase, which is, one, the third-grade reading proficiency, that increased by 2.4%, as well as our seventh-grade reading proficiency increased by 2.7 percentage points, which was an amazing tribute. Now, we, we're watching third grade specifically because we've done a lot of work, as you all know, for the past, this will be our third year, for the past two years, letters training was a huge investment to really teach students how to, how to read. And those word rec and decoding routines that we put into place, when you increase the knowledge and skills of our teachers in order to help with increased student success and, and reading for that matter, for our students, you're going to see these particular types of gains, because the foundation of word recognition, if our students can read by first grade and continue to do, continue to have that foundation of word rec and decoding, we also, there's another part of that reading though, is going to be the language comprehension or reading comprehension, which is what we're doing this year. This year, we're not abandoning word rec and decoding. Matter of fact, we need to continue build on that culture so they, our students have great foundation. But understand that this year, as we train our staff and increase their knowledge and skills on language comprehension, both oral and written, we're, we're anticipating and excited to see the growth that we can make, because now we're talking about language comprehension, which is what our state assessments do measure in that regard. So congratulations to our staff, teachers, support staff, to help our students succeed. The next set of data is still state assessment data, but this is reading level, so this is level 1. The one previous was 3s and 4s. So this is level 1 impact on our data. So a student at level 1 shows a limited ability to understand and use the skills and knowledge needed for post-secondary readiness. So if you look at this, same, same type of, but this time, we're looking for decreases from '22-'23 to '23-'24, because we want to remove students out of level 1 and push them up to levels 2, 3, and 4. And if you look to the far right, you're also, you're going to see the gains, even though it's, it's the right side, because we have percentage point decrease, which is what we want to see with level 1, all except for 6th grade. And we haven't really pinpointed why is 6th grade the only one that's not? We're assuming at this point, that it's because of the transition from 5th to 6th grade. We, we also notice, 4th grade in particular, always seems to have a, a better percentage. They're already at 32.9%, which is probably the percentage, the best percentage we have currently out of all the grades that are showing. But we also want to highlight, 3rd grade reading percentage in level 1 decreased by 3.8 percentage points and got below the 50% mark, which means we're on the right track, because we, when we first started seeing this after the pandemic and during the pandemic, we were seeing numbers that were concerning. Now, are we saying we're perfect? No, there's still too many students in level 1 that we want to get out. There's still not enough students in 3s and 4s. But to know that we are, to see the trend for the past two years that we're seeing growth and progress is the momentum that we definitely want to see. I want to put this in perspective too, because some people say, well, is it, is it a fast enough rate? We want to see more, obviously, our 10th graders, we're going to have to point that out, our 10th graders had a 5.9 percentage, percentage point decrease, which was extremely high. So shout out to our 10th grade and our high school teachers, but it's not just high school teachers, it's, it's the foundation from elementary, and what the middle school teachers are doing in order to prepare our students for that 10th grade. And also, our 3rd grade down below at 3.8 decrease was also. So both times, I highlighted 3rd grade, which should show that what we're investing in in kindergarten or pre-K, kindergarten 1st, 2nd, and 3rd is working. So that, that's a tribute to that as well. But we want to make sure that we're continuing on, on this particular track, because this, this is, and I said I was going to make an analogy, all of us probably at some point wanted to lose weight, including myself. So after the first month, you get on the scale, and you either see no change or you see very minor change, and some people quit, or some people will continue saying, I'm on the right track, I'm going to get there. After the second month, you start to see a bigger loss of your weight. Well, that's, I want to use that as an analogy to this, to say, we are on the right track. We need to continue doing what we're doing in order to help our students succeed. Our teachers are doing what they need to do, quality instruction. We have an assessment system for multi-tiered system of supports to provide interventions to fill gaps for students. We are doing a phenomenal job in the Wichita Public Schools, and I want to make sure that we celebrate. we celebrate these successes and these trends, because we're going to continue on this trend and hopefully see bigger gains as we go through and as we increase the knowledge and skills necessary to get our kids literate and to help in the state assessment as well. So, the last data point on where we are in this particular year is FastBridge, this spring comparison results. And I want to, I'm going to talk about the left column, because you probably don't know what those acronyms are. So, FastBridge, first off, is a platform that offers computer-based assessments for students to help teachers make decisions about instruction and interventions. The assessments are given three times a year in the fall, the winter, and spring, depending on the grade level. So, for example, our elementary FastBridge assessments, and these are more formative assessments, because we, we test three times a year, opens on September fourth. So, we don't have that data yet, but do know that we are going to bring back those results, because we, we plan on doing more smaller progress monitoring presentations around our strategic plan, including interim goals throughout the school year at every one of our board meetings. So, kindergarten word segmenting, that's the first one on the, if you're looking at the left column, that's what word seg means. It assesses a student's ability to separate a spoken word into individual sounds called phonemes. So, I'm sure you were going to, you were looking forward to some learning around reading and literacy. So, the kindergarten letter name fluency, that's the LNF that you see on the left column, measures a student's ability to identify and name letters in a short amount of time. That's what they're measuring. The next one down is LSF. That is kindergarten letter sound fluency. This is the ability to identify the sounds that letters make accurately, regardless of whether they are upper or lowercase. First grade, the NWF, is the nonsense word fluency. This assesses knowledge of basic letter sounds and the ability to blend letter sounds into consonant, vowel consonant, and vowel consonant words. That's what it's measuring. And then you see the second grade through fifth grade, the CBMR, which stands for the curriculum-based measurement for reading. This is an evidence-based assessment used for screening and progress monitoring to determine a student's general reading ability. So, if, if we screen them and we see that there is some gaps, that's where interventions come in. So, if all students get these, these screeners, and then we determine which students need a little bit more help and support, and that's how we then turn into tier-two or even a more intensive support, which would be tier-three to fill the gaps, that doesn't mean that they don't get core instruction. They all still get core instruction, but we, we end up providing a little bit more support for those students. So, if you look at the data, this is, this is very telling. When you look at kindergarten and first grade in particular, when you see a fifty-six-point-five percent proficiency in the spring of twenty-one, last spring, last school year, we jumped to seventy-one point three percent, which is a fourteen-point-eight percentage point increase. And even though we went down a little bit from the year previous, we're, we're looking at where we were in twenty-one to where we are now. Jump into letter sound fluency. If you look at twenty-nine point nine percent proficient, now to sixty-one point four percent, a thirty-one point five percentage point increase, amazing. These are the things that are happening with our, with our children, with our students in our schools. And I want to, we need to continue to celebrate and understand that we are making gains and growth within our district. And you can see to the right side, every single one of those measures has increased a certain percentage point. That is the momentum that we want to continue moving into this school year. So, let's talk goal number two, student success. We talked about the student success outcome for life, college, and career success. It's going to be measured by the percentage of students earning five or more post-secondary assets prior to graduation will reach at least fifty percent by May of 2029. So, let's take a look at goal number two, how goal number two is driving efforts to prepare each student to be life, college, and career-ready in the Wichita Public Schools.
In Wichita Public Schools, fifty percent of students will acquire five or more post-secondary assets before graduating high school. We are firm believers that laying the foundation for this achievement begins early in the educational journey. In our elementary schools, we believe in more than just academics. We're preparing students for life with essential skills like teamwork, problem-solving, and responsibility. Through interactive learning and play, students develop critical thinking and creativity. Together, we're building life skills for a brighter future. Throughout middle school, we prioritize not only academic growth, but also the cultivation of essential skills. With teamwork and effective communication, students learn to express ideas, listen actively, and resolve conflict. Creating a five-year plan to guide their aspirations offers students a roadmap for accomplishing essential tasks before graduating high school. Workshops and activities help students develop essential skills and plan their academic journey. In high school, real-world experiences are invaluable. Internships and community service provide practical insights and foster responsibility. Work-based learning opportunities help students prepare for success in life, college, and career. They emerge as resilient, compassionate, and capable leaders, poised to make a positive difference. Attaining five or more post-secondary assets before graduation equips students to excel in these areas. Innovative programs such as our Future Ready Centers underscore our dedication to enhancing education in Wichita Public Schools.
And our goal number three, the measure specifically is increase the percentage of students that feel safe and connected to their school from eighty-point-three percent to ninety percent by May of 2029. So, let's watch how goal number three is, is driving efforts to create and enhance safety and belonging for each student in the Wichita Public Schools.
In Wichita Public Schools, we strive to ensure that safety and student belonging are at the heart of everything we do. Safety is a top priority. We have robust security measures in place, including trained personnel and regular safety drills, to ensure that every student feels safe and secure. We maintain a safe environment where students can focus on learning and thriving. We prioritize support for the whole child. Our dedicated child study teams provide confidential guidance and support, ensuring that every student feels heard and valued. We celebrate diversity and foster inclusivity. We strive for our schools to be welcoming communities where students and staff from all backgrounds feel accepted and valued. Embracing diversity enriches the learning environment and promotes understanding and empathy among students. In Wichita Public Schools, safety and belonging go hand in hand. Through unity and support, we create a nurturing environment where every student can thrive and reach their full potential.
Those videos are a lot more engaging than I am, so I'm glad, I'm glad they did a great job of, of showing what goal one, two, and three are about. This, this kind of summarizes those three goals specifically, and I told you at the very beginning that we are also looking at milestones or steps. How do we know that, that we're going to reach these goals by 2029? So, we created what we call milestones, year-one goals. And these year-one goals for graduation and academic achievement, what is going to be going from seventy-nine point two percent to eighty-one percent by May of 2025. So, we're, we're looking in increments to make sure that we're getting to where we need to be by 2029. There's goal number two for life readiness, the percentage of students earning five or more post-secondary assets prior to graduation will reach at least ten percent. We're, we're assuming that we're going to be higher than that, but we have to create a tracking mechanism to make sure, and we're working on that now, to make sure we're capturing these five or more post-secondary assets. But we don't know yet if we're at the ten percent, but that is going to be our goal at the end of this particular school year. And the last one for safety and belonging, increase the percentage of students that feel safe and connected to their school from eighty-point-three percent to eighty-two-point-three percent by May 2025, so at the end of this school year. So, when we, when we share and send out our safety and belonging survey, we're hoping that we will see by the thing, by the culture we're building and some of the other systems that we created, to make sure that, that our students and staff for that matter feel a sense of safety and belonging and welcoming environment. So, we're hoping to, to see that. So, I just wanted to share what those three milestones are going to be. So, this particular slide is, is basically showing you the, kind of the levels of our strategic plan with the outcomes and its measures, the interim goals. And I wanted just to reiterate that we are going to come back to you at each board meeting throughout the school year and really kind of share the progress around either interim goals or even some of our student success outcomes as well on, on what we're doing. So, you're going to get a lot more, kind of quicker presentations than even I'm doing, but, but at least it'll keep you focused on the academic outcomes, academic successes of our district as we go throughout the school year. As I conclude, our overview of the Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan, our commitment to producing student success is a journey of relentless pursuit. This is why our last video is titled Inspiring Student Success: The Relentless Pursuit of Greatness. Let's watch.
Life is a journey filled with unknowns, where challenges and fears often loom large. Yet, within this vast landscape, exists a field where dreams take flight and futures are forged. With each courageous step forward, we shatter the boundaries of what is deemed possible. Every base conquered becomes a testament to our indomitable spirit and our relentless pursuit of greatness. Here, where dreams become the future through achievement and life readiness, we pass the torch of inspiration, igniting the flames of learning for one another. With the wind at our backs and the unwavering support of champions beside us, we march forward, eager to embrace the endless opportunities that await us. We find the strength to rise above adversity, to scale heights beyond our wildest dreams, to defy the odds, and to emerge victorious. With hearts full of hope and spirits ablaze with possibility, we celebrate the dawn of a new era of greatness, filled with promise, potential, and opportunities. Wichita, we cannot do this without you. This is the place where we belong, where together, hand in hand, we build futures bright with promise. Each step forward is a testament of the power of dreaming big and the limitless potential that resides within us all. To assure that, every student is future-ready.
Together, we will elevate academic achievement, prepare students for a dynamic, dynamic future, and foster an environment of welcoming and belonging where each student can thrive. Let's move forward with passion and dedication, striving for excellence in all that we do. Thank you for your continued support and leadership and partnership as we make our vision a reality. I am now open for any comments or questions that you may have.
Melody?
Thank you, Diane, and thank you, Gil. I love this so much, because it's able to hardwire each one of our goals and how we're, how we're actually where we are in terms of achieving them. And so, we'll hear this, did you say every meeting?
For the most, probably most of the board meetings, if not all of them.
I think it's, you know, exactly, I know we talked about this months ago, but it's so good to see it actually put into place and, and then to hear this, because once again, hardwiring it will make it almost like, you know, for everyone to be able to really recognize that this is truly who we are, what we're trying to achieve, and we're, we're meeting those. We're, we're making, making our way towards it. Couple of points or questions that I have on goal number one, and that's student, well, one is on goal number one, and I think the other one is going to be on probably goal number two. So, with goal number one, you mentioned, you mentioned ACT and work keys, and then reducing the number of students that are not proficient, you know, by a certain percentage in high, middle, and, and elementary, and some goals was for, and maybe it wasn't solely focused on goal number one, but a twenty-one for ACT, what was it for work keys again?
A silver or above on the work keys.
A silver or above. Do we also include our, is the PSAT, is that in, do we capture that in our post-secondary assets or?
I, I do not believe the PSAT, I'm looking for, is part of our post-secondary assets, but we do, we do have the opportunity for our students to take the PSAT, which sets them up for being a national merit scholar or semifinalist. So, we do have the opportunity for our students to take the PSAT, but it's not part of the post-secondary assets.
It's not necessarily a, a part of that. Okay, and then, and, and maybe, I don't know, maybe that's a conversation we can have. And I know, it's, it's the achievers, you know, it's those that are really striving for a very specific goal. And then the other is when we talk about being able to, when I, I am on goal number two, actually, it's still goal number one, looking at the FastBridge comparison results. So, with those, and we can see incrementally just how far we've come, juxtapose or transpose those incremental steps into how we do on state assessments. How does it wash out?
I, I don't think there is a correlation or comparison to say how well we do on FastBridge is going to automatically say we're going to do well. The FastBridge is more of a screener, especially at the younger levels, that it is, is more of a formative, that's seeing the skills necessary to make sure that they're ready to be able to read, whereas the state assessment is really focused on reading comprehension. Can you comprehend what you read? Well, you can't comprehend what you read if you don't have the, the foundation of word rec, of being able to sound out the letters, to make a word. All those are foundational. So, really, a lot of the, now, the CBMR can, can talk to how well a student is currently or their ability to read, but we use that screener to say, okay, if you're not at a specific point of the target, then you may need some help in maybe some of those other areas that, that you just need to fill those gaps. And we put them into interventions to be able to fill those gaps.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to get us where all of the other assessments and/or testing, doing the comparatives that we do on an incremental basis, and we see the growth, but yet it doesn't equate into the actual state assessment scores that we see. Well, I shouldn't say it doesn't equate. I know what you're saying is that it's moving us in that direction slowly. It appears as though.
That is correct. If you look at the scores that we have right here, the, the progress that we're making in FastBridge, and then see what, what we have on the state assessment for third grade, because remember, we started two years ago on letters training in particular. So, if you look at the percentage of third grade being one of the highest except for seventh grade, a two-point-four percentage point increase, we're seeing the movement there because of the foundation that we have for the word rec routines and the teachers that are using the routines in order to help students do better on the foundational reading, word recognition, and decoding. Same thing for level-one. If you, third grade would have been the highest percentage point decrease if it weren't for our tenth grade. Our tenth grade students actually had a five-point-nine percentage point decrease in level-one. So, they were very high as well. So, kudos to them as, as well on concentrating on the proper strategies for reading comprehension to make sure our tenth graders can do well on the state assessment and teaching to the standard. That's the other thing that we don't think about.
There you go.
Teaching to the cognitive level of the standard.
There you go.
Get a higher level thinking for our students to make sure they reach that level. And if they're teaching to the standards, then they're going to, that's what the state assessment is measuring too, is the, the standards, the Kansas State standards.
Yeah, and that's what I was, that's kind of the, not a disconnect, but that's what I'm missing, trying to make that connection as to how we're doing the pre and how that actually builds into what we are ultimately going to be, not scored on, but I, I mean, you could almost call it a score. So, this is excellent, I, this is good work, good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie?
Gil, this is fabulous, and it's so exciting to see all of the improvements. And of course, we expect to see that every time, of course, you know, set that, set the standard high here. My, my concern, and you've addressed it as well, is, is this, is the sixth graders. And I know Superintendent, we've had some conversations even with the board at the board table about, you know, we've had a lot of emphasis at the elementary level, we've had a lot of emphasis at the high school level, and we're aware of the fact that we want to put some more efforts into the middle school level. This is, this is early, I'm, I'm being, I'm being ahead of the, of the ball here, but what, what are some of the thinking, what is some of the thinking around and planning and maybe working with? thinking, what is some of the thinking around and planning and maybe working with secondary principals? What are some of the thoughts about how we can help those middle school kids?
I think it starts with just understanding the transition, because to me, when you go from elementary fifth grade to middle school, there's differences in procedures, systems. And I said, well, if you look at even the high school, the other transition from eight to nine, well, there's no state assessment in ninth grade, so it's almost like they get, they have a year of acclimation too, but maybe the standards, we need to look at where the standards fit for fifth and sixth grade. So just really honing in on some of the areas that we can maybe align better, but also help with transition.
Yeah, I know, we've talked about the, about the fact that we're going to have some more K through eights, and that that will clearly obviously help in that transition issue.
The other thing I think we can point to, to some extent in middle school, that should be a lot better next year, is the year-over-year vacancies we've had in some of these areas.
Yeah.
And not just sixth grade, I mean, it's probably kind of all across the board, but we know, you know, we have great long-term subs, we know they do really great work in the classroom, but we also know that a highly qualified teacher in every room that is dedicated to be there the whole year produces better outcomes. And so we're hopeful with, you know, not to steal Fabian's thunder and Sean's thunder in a couple of weeks, but filling those vacancies makes a difference.
Yeah, no, that's true, that's a good point. Plus also, it also reinforces us keeping those staff at the, like the mental health, the social workers, that study team, yes. The importance of the fact that we chose to keep those people because those are crucial in this whole belonging and safety piece.
Yep.
Kathy?
I'm curious, with the data that you put together, was that primarily just for middle school, six, seven, eight, and how would that compare to a K through eight school? I would like to know how that is different.
I don't, I don't know that we've compared a sixth grader in a K eight to a sixth grader that's not in a K eight.
I would like to know what that comparison is.
I think we can do that, we have not done that, but we'll definitely do that.
Because if we're going to be going into that direction, these numbers could shoot up, which are down, whichever way you're looking at it.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Kathy's comment, in terms of assessment scores and just, again, like academic achievement of middle schoolers and, you know, regular middle school setting compared to like a K through eight setting. Something else too, I think it'd be helpful for me and the rest of the board if we were to get like disaggregated data when it comes to the reading assessments, but then also like the FastBridge scores, especially like from a, like an equity lens, just again, like seeing like which special populations, like do we have to be much more intentional and cognizant about like, you know, bridging that gap?
Absolutely.
Hazel?
First of all, I'd like to say I'm really happy to see that we're focusing on sharing this information with not only the board, with the community, because I think it's really imperative that they know where we are, truly are, in our statistics. I was wondering, the success that we talked about in the state assessment for, in number one, goal one, do you attribute our implementation of the letters training to the success of?
I definitely do. There's research out there, I'm trying to remember the name, but at a Harvard that talks about three ways to increase student learning, and one of those is increase the skills and knowledge of the teachers' teaching of the content. If we know what to do to help and we're using that, which we are with some of the routines, but even the teachers are becoming so good at it that they're helping our students, even if they're English language learners, they're also using the same processes and strategies to get it. So yes, I would say that, especially because the last two years is when we started the letters training. I know it's been very comprehensive, and I applaud the teachers for hanging in there, but we've also heard some great things from teachers too about how well they didn't know at the particular time, so now they're using those strategies. We're hoping to see that same enthusiasm for volume two, which is the language comprehension, the written and the oral, so reading comprehension, so we can just continue to boost not only the knowledge and skills of our teachers, so they can help teach that particular content and use the appropriate strategies to help for reading comprehension, which should also increase state assessment scores as well.
So what is the percentage of teachers that utilize this program?
The, I believe it's all the elementary teachers that have been, that are being, going through training for letters, and where even those that are new are also getting trained within that. So we're still trying to figure out the best sustainability plan, but the state has done a great job of helping us financially with continuing with the training, but sooner or later, that money's going to be gone too. So they're starting a cadre to help kind of train the trainers to where we can have about 25 staff members that can be trained so we can help continue to sustain the idea of science of reading and the letters training.
Thank you, I look forward to future presentations.
Yeah.
Gil, could you further explain, when we've got a significant portion of our students at a level one, could you explain for us how interventions work and the progress monitoring? How are students identified and how does that?
Great, great question. The screeners that you saw, we start, because we have screeners and we have diagnostics. So if a student doesn't do well in the screener, then they go into some diagnostics that could help us determine where the gap is that they need. So if they don't do well in the screener, I can't remember what the, and we can come back with the specifics to help with that too. But if they don't do well in the screener, then they can go into a tier-two intervention or a tier-three, depending on how low they are. If they're high risk, they're going to go down to probably a tier-three. If there's some risk, they're going to probably go into a tier-two. And then, of course, there's low risk, and then there's college pathways. So if you're low risk and college pathway, you're probably just strengthening the core. So that's how, all these FastBridge assessments, when you do the screener, will determine if a student is going to need an intervention or not. Right now, like our elementary, they're doing class-wide interventions because they have not given the first screener assessment yet, which opens on September 4th. So once they take that assessment, the teachers will look at the data and they'll start to determine what students need extra interventions to fill the gaps that they need, and they call that walk to intervention. So they'll go to a teacher to help them get the skills necessary, and in hopes that they'll end up getting out of that tier-two and can go back to just being tier-one. And what they do in those interventions is progress monitor. So they'll continue to take some of those screeners as well as diagnostics to progress monitor the students to see if the strategies they're using in the classroom or the program that they're using in the classroom is showing an impact for the student. So we want that student to grow as we progress monitor them to make sure that they're going to get to, I'm just going to call it grade level or the target, so they can say, okay, you've done well in your tier-two, now you don't need tier-two, you could stay in your tier-one, which is basically on grade level that we want everybody to be at. No matter what, everybody's getting core instruction, on-grade level instruction, because we definitely want one year's growth, at least one year's growth in one year's time for student achievement.
Thank you, Gil. Any further questions? Okay, Gil, thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm encouraged by the FastBridge scores and look forward to further information from you guys.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, next item?
Next item, consent.
Does anybody have any items to pull from consent? Seeing nothing, do I have a motion to pass consent?
I'm moved that we pass consent items.
Motion made by Julie, seconded by Noc. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 6-0. Patrick, next item?
Next item, under operations, facilities master plan, step one, final draft.
Welcome back, Luke. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Luke's going to start us off, and then I'm going to, I feel awkward, we'd have to look both directions here, so I'm going to go over there with him and talk to all of you at once, so, but I'll let Luke get us going here with our master plan.
All right. Get the presentation pulled up here. All right, well, good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the board. My name's Luke Newman, I'm the Director of Facilities, and I'll be presenting with my esteemed Superintendent, Mr. Beilefeld. So tonight we'll be revisiting the proposed first step of our facilities master plan and laying out some key next steps. Before we get into it, I would like to emphasize that this is just the first step that we plan to take towards rebuilding Wichita Public Schools. The grand vision of this work is to transform our district step by step with intentionality and relentless pursuit. We believe that all students in Wichita Public Schools deserve the absolute best, and our commitment to this work is due to that core belief. When coming to the final recommendation for step one, we took all the data into account and looked at it in every way we could possibly, we could think possible. Due to the diversity of needs in our portfolio, an argument could easily be made for a number of other schools to be included as well, but ultimately, we felt that this plan represented the best and most equitable first step into rebuilding our district, with hopeful plans to continue the process through additional steps over the years to come. The ultimate goal being to make improvements to nearly all buildings in our district through this work. Okay, I skipped my first slide. That was, that was my first slide, so here we go onto the next one. So with that said, I just want to, I'll just, just going to run through the master plan, the step one, and tried to really put it as simply as I possibly could. I know there's a lot of ins and outs to this thing, and we've kind of laid it out in a couple of different ways, but this feels like the simplest way to read it. So we just start with the demos and rebuilds. We've got Adams Elementary School, Black Elementary School, Caldwell Elementary School, Irving Elementary, McLean, Coleman Middle School, and Truesdale Middle School. So those would be true demos and rebuilds. The next set here, next set we have here is renovate and repurpose. So we'd be looking at the existing Coleman Middle School, which the programs we've talked about, Coleman Accommodating would be Chester Lewis, Gateway, and EI Academy, but that's, that could potentially change, those are just the ones that we've, that we've, that we're thinking make the most sense currently. The new buildings that would be entirely new to our district, not rebuilds, would be the Future Ready Center, which would house our construction trades, built adjacent to the East High School where the Grove Campus currently sits, the B building, and then the Early Childhood Center built on the Chester Lewis site, and the plans for Chester Lewis would be to demo that building and build a new early childhood center there. Additions, we've got Cessna, which would be an addition and convert it to a K eight building, and Wells would be, would remain. It was a site that changed, the plan for that building changed, which I'll get to get to here in a minute, but ultimately, we were looking at combining Sowers and Wells together into that site and building a small addition to accommodate the high school specific needs that we would need with that building. Closures, and we have called these consolidating buildings, but really for simplicity, you know, the two terms have been a bit confused, and so we figured we're just going to name it, you know, they are, we are closing these buildings, but they are consolidating into other buildings is kind of the reason why those two terms have been interchangeable. So the buildings that would close, our school buildings would be La Overture, OK, Pleasant Valley, and Woodland, and then the program relocations, which again, are building closings, but they're actually, those programs would be relocating to other buildings, so the programs themselves would not be closing. So we have Little Early Childhood Center, Sowers, Gateway, Dunbar, and ISC, which is the EI Academy. A couple of additional items of note would be the, that are also included in the master plan, step one, is Isley Elementary School, converting that to a K eight, investing in our high school maintenance needs with the remaining funds that are not going towards various rebuilds and additions and repurposes. So we hope to be able to capture a fair amount of funds to plug towards the high school maintenance needs to keep those, to keep those maintained. And then we would also construct athletic fields at the Northeast Magnet High School. So the final changes from the initial draft that you saw, there's really just three changes. The Bryant School would remain, we originally looked at combining Sowers, Wells, and Bryant into one building. Bryant, Bryant is now going to remain where it is. Dunlap will remain as well, and then Jardine is kind of the recent one that came up where through discussions with the principals at both Wells and Sowers, really getting into it deeper, we found that Jardine was just really not an appropriate building for those, for that population of students. And so really Wells is better suited for it, and with the dollars that we would have put towards Jardine, it would pay more dividends, we can get, we can get more for our, more bang for our buck essentially by investing those dollars into Wells and really making it a well-suited school for that, that population. So that's why that change was made, and we're in really early discussions with the city and some community groups down there that have some pretty strong interest in the Jardine building, and that was something that as we got into this plan, that was really important, that something meaningful happened with that, with that building, with that land, you know, particularly to that community and just what it's, what it's done to serve, serve them. So want to make sure that, that something good goes in there with us moving out. Okay, and so now I just want to touch on a few benefits of the plan, kind of high-level benefits before turning it over to Kelly to touch on some things. But first off, this is the first step towards right-sizing and rebuilding our district portfolio, as I said earlier on. We, in doing this work, we would be, in step one on its own, we would be avoiding 200 million in deferred maintenance through 2034. We would have a more right-sized district, which means our schools will receive, will receive a more well-proportioned slice of the total funding pie, to steal an analogy that Ms. Willis likes to often use. So to boil that down, what I mean by that is that even though not all schools are being touched by the plan, all schools will benefit from it because it means more resources will be freed up and distributed. So reducing 16 aging buildings and replacing them with seven new high-performing buildings along with a handful of additions and renovations means the time, resources, money, and manpower that would have gone towards maintaining those buildings will be redistributed to the rest of our buildings. So that, so to give some examples, that work order that might have previously taken two to three days to get to is now reduced to only one day from our maintenance staff. And so to take it down another layer to the classroom, classrooms that are uncomfortable, that might take, again, several days for us to get to and make, as the, as the union stated earlier, sometimes it takes us a while to get to, we are now, will now be able to get to those issues a lot faster and provide more comfortable spaces for our students. So it benefits the entire district by starting to move into this, this process. Next item, you know, it's, hate to say it, but more closures are inevitable. This plan positions us for more sustained, future-ready success by providing new and innovative spaces for our kids to learn. And it's an investment in our, in the future of our city, communities, and kids. We believe strongly in this work and what it will do for our communities. And segueing into Mr. Beilefeld's piece, the master plan is in alignment with our strategic plan, and the work directly impacts student learning and, student learning and outcomes. So I'll turn it over.
That's perfect, that's perfect. Thank you, Luke. So, I've been sitting there for about an hour, just tapping my foot, ready to get up here and talk to you about how excited I am about this. Gil did a great job laying out our plan, right, and Luke did a good job laying out this plan, but I want to make sure that we don't forget what the plan's all about, right? That's why the heart is here. If you think about what your heart does, right, your heart is what keeps you alive, it's what connects every part of your body together, right? The heart pumps blood to every, to your fingers, to your toes, to all parts of your body. And so these plans, the strategic plan and the facilities master plan are not about one kid, or this kind of kid, or that kind of kid, it's about every student being future-ready, right? That's the heart of our district, is every single student. And so as we walk through the plan, I think you're able to see how the strategic plan supports every student, the facilities master plan supports every student, and that's what we're here for, right? We're here to pump blood into the entire district, to every student, and see that they can be successful in what they do, and they can really become future-ready. But this is really about our vision, your vision, this was the vision that you guys adopted last October, I think, or November, and I'll read it because I think- And I'll read it because I think it is the foundation of everything it is we're talking about. Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. So we wanna be the premier district of choice. That's our vision. So if you wanna get somewhere, what do you do to get there? You make a plan, right? You make a plan. And that's what we've done. We've made plans to get there, to become the premier district of choice. We want every student and family that lives in our district to take pride in their ability to show up to our schools every day. And we wanna be the district that other people choose from all sorts of educational options that are out there. That's our vision. How do we do that? We have great academic outcomes so that parents and students know they're gonna get what they need to be future-ready, college-ready, career-ready, life-ready, and we have facilities that people choose. And Katie made a great example. If you were to choose between an air-conditioned gym and a non-air-conditioned gym, if you wanna be the district of choice, which one do you have, right? You have an air-conditioned gym. As a parent, I want my kid in an air-conditioned gym, right? We have parents choose our schools despite some of those things because we're so good at what we do, because we build connections with kids, because we have great teachers and staff. But we can be even better. We can even become more of the district of choice for more families with great outcomes and great facilities both. It takes both of those things. So, I wanna set the two plans kinda side by side, all right? There was the plan from the fall and the plan from the spring. Remember last fall? I know, knock on Melody, you're probably watching from the gallery, but the rest of the board went through a process of community engagement, stakeholder feedback. We did surveys, we did focus groups. We had 14 different community events where we brought in people to talk about what do you want our academic outcomes to be as a district? What do you believe we should be, right? We then took that together, we put that into a plan, we looked at data, we looked at state assessment data, we looked at post-secondary data, we looked at what we called back then market value assets, now we're calling post-secondary assets. We put all of that together to create what Gil just talked about, every student future-ready plan. That's our strategic plan that we approved in the fall. Now, tonight is our chance to approve the facilities master plan. How did we get here? We looked at data, we looked at maps and charts and demographic trends and places where kids were, you know, there's gonna be more kids in the future, gonna be fewer kids in the future. We looked at the capacity of our buildings, we looked at the age of our buildings, the needs of our buildings. We put all of that together and then we did community feedback. We did focus groups, we did surveys, we did engagement events in the community, we did events where we brought community members in. We listened to the community create that plan. So we have this plan from the fall that was the academic outcomes, our student outcomes plan. And now we have this plan from the spring, this is our facilities master plan. And if you forget everything else from tonight, hopefully you understand, it's just one plan, guys. It's just one plan. There's not two separate plans. It's all the same plan. They support each other, they connect, and we need both of them in order to become the district of choice. So, quick aside, I wanna tell a quick story and I think I've told this to most of you board members before, but I'll say it again. I have a slide up here that's one of the great renderings that Alloy Architecture did. And this is not the plan for a school, but this is just an example of what it could be. When you look at this space and you think of putting a teacher into this space and saying, "Teach a bunch of third graders," or "Teach a bunch of seventh graders," this looks a lot different than the traditional classroom that we see in most of our schools. And I had a personal experience with this. I started my career at Goddard High School. I joke that I'm old enough that there was just one high school in Goddard back when I taught there. And I was a traveling teacher. I taught language arts in a traditional classroom with rows, and then I taught technology classrooms in a computer lab setting that had circle tables and then chairs. There was no screen, no rows, no desks, just tables and chairs. And in my last year, I asked the principal, I said, "I'm tired of traveling back and forth, can I just have the one room instead of having to split time between the rooms?" He said, "Sure." So I had to teach language arts in a classroom that had circle tables with kids around them. We had no projection screen, I had no rows. So it changed the way I taught. I was forced to teach differently. The learning went to the center of that table, the kids circled around the learning, and it changed the outcomes that I had with my kids in that room. Deeper conversations about literature and writing, more use of technology because they all had computers that were right there. The environment, literally, the space that I was in changed the way I taught and changed the outcomes for kids. And I think you can see this, you guys saw last week or the week before at the STEM Lab over at Curtis, you put teachers and kids in that space and it changes the way we teach, right? It changes it, it has to. You can't teach in a traditional format here. So, new spaces, different spaces, updated spaces can change our outcomes and change what we're able to do with kids. So, the two plans become one with the heart. This is like a marriage, right? Yeah, I got one. Thank you. So, what does this mean? Kindergarten readiness and early childhood. Luke talked about the early childhood center that we were planning to put at the Chester Lewis campus. Remember, this is about every kid. So the students that are at Little Early Childhood Center will be relocated to this new state-of-the-art facility. Our teachers and staff at Little do an amazing job in a subpar facility. It's a great facility, but it wasn't built for the early childhood experience that we currently have. Many of those kids are immobile, on feeding tubes, you know, wheelchairs. It takes a large amount of space to adequately take care of these kids. These three-year-olds that are non-verbal and maybe in a wheelchair their entire life, they're our kids. They're part of that heartbeat of our district. They matter just as much as every other kid. And we need to invest in them and invest in that facility. It's not just gonna be for disabled students, it's also gonna be for at-risk students and for regular education preschool kids in a part of our district that badly needs early childhood. So this is an investment in facilities, but remember what Gil talked about in goal number two of the strategic plan, getting kids' life, college, and career ready. One of the best ways we can do that is to get kids' school-ready for kindergarten. Kindergarten readiness and the ASQ data that we talk about, this directly aligns with goal two of the strategic plan. If we can expand and enrich our ability to get kids ready for kindergarten, it will support goal two of the strategic plan. Third-grade literacy, intervention support, and differentiation. So, in thinking about some of the classrooms that we have now in our current spaces, some of these schools that date back to, I would say, between 1950 and 1970, we've heard this data before from Luke and the team, the square footage in these classrooms is smaller than what we would build today, right? We would build a thousand-foot kindergarten classroom, 900-square-foot first-grade, second-grade classroom. Some of the schools that we're talking about, either consolidating or rebuilding, have closer to 700 square foot space. So we ask teachers to put kids in centers. We want you to differentiate, right? We want you to group and ability-group kids. Tier-two instruction that Gil was just talking about for reading, very hard to do with limited space, right? Not impossible, our teachers do a great job with what they're handed, but much easier to do with modern classroom space. Any district in the area that builds a new classroom is gonna build it adequate so that you can do centers. You can differentiate learning, you can use application-level learning for kids. You get them exposure and experience to things multimodal, right? That we're not just sitting at a desk all day long, we should be up and talking, we should be up and moving. It takes space in a classroom to do that. In order to achieve our goal for third-grade literacy, in order to improve student outcomes, we need space that's conducive to do it. Think about the STEM Lab, think about the classroom we just saw. Learning in that space feels different, looks different, and sounds different for our kids and can produce better outcomes. A lot of our schools that were built in that same era, there was a principal, there was a principal's office, and maybe a nurse, and a secretary, and that was the support staff. And you think of what we do with ESOL and intervention and all of the different supports we have. We have assistant principals, we have counselors, we have future-ready advocates. We have all these other roles that now need spaces and buildings. The newer buildings we built, we put those spaces in there. But we can actually have adequate space for intervention, adequate space for support. Again, that's goal one of the strategic plan, right? We build modern learning spaces and we can support better intervention, better differentiation, and better support. Moving up to the middle schools, right? What did Gil talk about in getting our kids ready for, and the video did a great job of it, talking about getting our kids' career exposure at the middle school level, they start to develop a plan, they start to develop an interest in something that's gonna motivate them and be relevant to them in the future, right? So, as we create middle school spaces, and we have two middle school spaces as part of the plan, it can look more like that Curtis STEM Lab in some ways, right? It can look more hands-on, more career-focused, and it can align with, you know, Coleman has a great magnet theme already, it can just expand and expound on that. Again, it gives kids a chance to apply their learning. Middle school kids do not even be sitting at desks all day. Developmentally, we know that's not what they need, but when you don't have the space, you don't have the facilities for it, it's harder and harder to do those things. So, middle school and career exploration, think of K-8, we already touched on K-8, so I won't go into that. But think of how goal number three talks about safety and belonging, right? And making sure everyone feels like they belong. You've heard it all throughout, from the Rally on the River through all sorts of things we talked about today. One of the advantages to K-8 schools, I was a principal at two different K-8 schools, is the connectedness that you feel as a school, that there's a sense of belonging. When Joel talked about Horace Mann, a lot of K-8 schools have that feeling. The kids aren't lost between fifth and sixth grade, they're part of the family and part of the team. The seventh and eighth graders have a chance and opportunity to mentor and help with the second graders in the same building. If we merge day schools, there's a sense of belonging, those staffs are connected. If we merge alternative programs, we can create that same sense of belonging under one roof. At the high school level, we really only have one part of the strategic plan, or one part of the facility master plan, the Future Ready Center for Trades, that's specific about post-secondary assets and moving those forward. But you can see a kind of our vision for high schools in general, that we're really trying to improve that experience of life, college, and career readiness for all of our kids through all sorts of different programming we have. Future-ready centers is one piece of that. When you attend a future-ready center, you're already at the five post-secondary assets that we want you to get at for the strategic plan goal. Work-based learning is embedded, credentials are embedded, college credit is embedded, all of the, you're gonna take ACT work keys. More likely than not, you're gonna get silver or higher if you're a part of those experiences. So, it's one strategy, we already have two future-ready centers, one more would build on that strategy, but that's how we achieve goal number two of the strategic plan. The two plans become one. Finally, and I think this is critical and important, that none of this happens without innovative and impactful professional learning. We had a great educator exchange last spring about professional learning and the need for teachers to be able to both learn and deepen their learning and then apply what they learn, right? We need these spaces. If we're gonna have it look like a STEM Lab, if it's gonna look different, teachers are gonna need the support and the ability to teach different and to do more of those application projects, that project-based learning, and really get to those deeper levels of learning. Gil talked about, when Melody asked the question, the threes and fours, right? How do you get kids to the threes and fours? It's cognitive load. It's getting kids to those deeper, higher cognitive levels. And one of the ways you do that is through project-based learning, hands-on learning, those sorts of things. But our teachers have to be supported in professional learning to do that. So, a brand-new innovative learning space that a teacher just does the same old, same old, doesn't change, move the needle for kids. There has to be professional learning that's involved in it. So hopefully you can start to see that the student outcomes that we talked about in the fall, the facility master plan that we talked about in the spring, they're really all one and the same. And it's really all about helping every kid in the district, right? Every kid belongs. The kid that is at the day school, the kid that is at Little, the kid that is pre-IB, all of our students, they all belong in our district and we wanna see every single one of them succeed. And you'll see, I don't know that we have this printed for you, but Wendy and her team did a great job of a map of the different facilities that are gonna be impacted. It's all across the district, right? And it's not just this community is getting a lot and this community is getting little. We're really trying to look at comprehensively all across the district to help every student become future-ready. Again, this is step one, there's gonna need to be more steps down the road in order to continue to build out and solve all of the problems that we have as far as facilities go. We'll always have challenges, even your brand-new refrigerator breaks down sometimes, right? Like we'll always have challenges. But we're much more likely to have success if we get some of these older systems offline, put in new systems, and take the 16 buildings that Luke talked about and build seven new. Operationally, we become more efficient. I wanna make sure, oh, last thing that I wanted to hit on too, merging the programs allows us to staff those child study teams better and continue to adhere to our dedication that we've, you know, we've already made a commitment to that and we can continue to do that. That's goal number three of the strategic plan, right? That sense of belonging, you've seen it tonight through the theme. When kids feel safe, they come to school. When kids come to school, they learn. And it takes that continuum of safety and belonging, which leads to attendance, which leads to outcomes. And those buildings are doing great work in getting in the attendance, numbers improved, are also gonna see those student outcomes improve. I believe that. I believe one of our biggest challenges to academic success is students just not being in the chair when we're there to learn. So, we'll continue that work. And I think, yes, now I'm gonna pass it back to Luke and he's gonna talk about what our next steps are and then we'll open it up for questions.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, so near-term next steps. Tonight, we will be asking for the board's approval and acceptance of the step-one master plan. And it's just the plan as written. On the September 9th board meeting is when we'll be presenting the funding plan and options around that. And then the third step is to retain Wolpert and their subcontractor Creative Entourage for Pre-Bond Development Services. And there's several reasons for why we'd like to retain them, first being that they have an 85% success rate across the country with this work. And we would like to lean on their national expertise and the successes that they've had there. Their background with us will give them an advantage with the fast-track timeline that we're looking at, to bring in somebody else at this point and try to get them acclimated and familiar with our district. And, you know, all the stakeholders, it would delay us probably several months, so sticking with them allows us to keep the timeframe on track. We have talked about local vendors being a priority, wanting to make sure that if we do go with the bond, that that money is flowing back into our local economy. So I just wanna address that. Their fee will represent approximately 0.0% of the overall bond amount if we were to pass one. So, a very small percentage in the grand scheme of things. And again, the priority is gonna be to keep those bond dollars local. So they'll be bringing in some different individuals that you'll get to hear from on the 9th that still have all the context, they've been involved through the whole process, but their expertise is on the pre-bond development side of things. So, a little bit of a different, little change-up in people you'll be dealing with there, so. And so with that, just brings us to our recommendation for tonight, which is recommended Board of Education accept and approve the final draft of the facilities master plan step one. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
And I just wanna remind the board, there was, and maybe the superintendent can, tonight's decision is whether or not we wanna plan, whether we wanna approve this plan. And I'll let the superintendent explain why we separated out approving the plan versus jumping straight into decisions we have to make on September 9th about a bond issue. Why did we separate the two?
Yeah, so what we're asking tonight is just approval of the plan, that being, you know, in essence, you know, this plan here. So, this is not about how we're funding the plan, this is just, these are the buildings that we wanna rebuild, these are the buildings that we would relocate, this is just our, and this is step one of future steps, but just to stay focused, this is step one of what we believe to be the best, based on the data, based on the community feedback. This is what we're bringing to you as what we feel like is the best plan to move us forward. You know, we've taken a lot of feedback, we've taken a lot of input, and so I guess now is the time, if there's other thoughts about this, that's what we're changing. Next two weeks from now, we'll talk about how we're gonna fund it. Even if we, you all as a board decide not to move forward with the bond issue, or if you move forward with the bond issue and it doesn't pass, this will still be the plan. We'll still, there's parts of this that we can work on, it'll have to be obviously a lot slower, and there's things that we can do in this plan at a minimal level with capital funds. So, that would be, you know, we wouldn't change the plan if something like that were to happen. like that were to happen, it would still be the plan that you have approved, unless you wanted to come back and vote again and amend the plan. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, and you know me, I'm a simple person, so I try to simplify it even more. Tonight, we're gonna decide whether or not we wanna roadmap or not. That's really what our job is tonight. So with that, we'll open it up for questions. Kathy?
Woo-hoo, thank you. I know you put a lot of work into this, Luke. I have some questions. Now, this may have been mentioned earlier with the grant that we were awarded, but Coleman is listed on both. So tell me, what does that look like then? Is, I think I heard it, correct me if I'm wrong, that Coleman, if we're gonna go through with the master plan, that the grant award another school will be put into that 21-figure, right?
That's a good, that's a good question. Do you wanna differentiate? So I think the energy money is to keeping the current Coleman, that would, the energy money would go into that facility, and then this master plan would be a new second facility. Does that make sense?
Right.
Is that?
Because Coleman, I think you're, what you've caught is the existing Coleman, we would be repurposing, so we'd still be using it for something, but we're putting grant dollars into it, so how does that impact the bond?
Okay, so Coleman's a demo, so you're wiping that out.
Right.
That's what it says, demo and rebuild.
Yeah, that's a little misleading, it's a little clear on this, because there's an asterisk on it, it says current Coleman would be repurposed to house alternative programs.
So we're not gonna demo Coleman?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, that's a good, yep, good point.
Another question is, in regards to Jardine, are we gonna sell that at market value? What are we gonna do with Jardine?
So, my preliminary discussions with the city representative has been potentially a sale, we're also looking at trading some parkland. McLean is one where, we're actually, they're appraising the parkland adjacent to McLean, and then we're appraising Jardine, and we're gonna look at numbers and see what makes sense. And then there might be some other parkland that makes sense to swap to make it an even trade.
So it might be for a dollar again?
No, we, well, we would look at it, like an even swap, so that's not really a dollar, I wouldn't.
What he's saying is, we could sell it for 500,000 and then buy parkland from them for 500,000. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah. And I just made that number up.
I know you did, I know you did, it's just that I, yeah, okay. One more question, I think. I really appreciated on the benefits of the plan, that it's an investment in the future of our city, community, and kids. And I'm even more encouraged, after Gil's presentation, with our rates going up, and even more encouraged with the potential of K through eight schools happening, and seeing our academic success increase, which is gonna give the city a return on the investment if they should choose to accept a bond issue. So I'm encouraged by Gil, and I think administration, you all set this up really good tonight for us, you set it up, you set us up. So, I think that it's important, it's very important, that the community know and understand that our academics are beginning to increase, and that with this new master plan, there is data, I think you sent us an email from Vince that showed us the data on the environment of student learning, and how the data does back up increased academic success with these different kinds of environment. Am I correct?
Yes, yeah, there is data to support a correlation between new facilities and academic outcomes, and attendance too. Air quality, safety, all of the, kinda all of the things that kinda Terry's crew does can be improved through a new facility.
I'm encouraged more than I have been in the last several months, not only by the master plan, but I'm encouraged about the data that, again, Gil presented tonight to us. And again, I think it's imperative that our community see this success that has begun to substantiate and support this master plan, as well as the financial assistance that we might need when it comes down to it, if it does. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kathy. Hazel?
So, you're talking about this plan, is it five-to-ten-year plan? What is the scope of the timeline?
Yeah, 10 would be a little long, I would, I'd be targeting the five, six-year.
Five-to-six-year plan, versus how long would this plan, we're gonna, if we pass this plan and we have no bond, and we would like to initiate these changes, how long would that take without a bond?
Uh... Yeah, I don't.
Well, what is, your capital outlay money would be essentially our pool to take from, assuming we didn't repair any other thing, so $20 million a year, I don't know what 450 divided by 20 is, but.
I'm just trying to make a point of, you know, versus, you know, not supporting this. I also would like to request that map you were talking about, that Wendy had, that shows overall proposed changes to all the district, I mean, to the different parts of the district, so that we can, you know, really see the changes. And then, you talked about the benefits of the program, of the changes of the master plan versus no action, and again, ultimately, with no action, it could create a loss in the future of jobs and school, more school closures, right?
Right, right.
Without implementing this plan?
Yeah, I mean, to your point of the needs, you know, adopting this plan, you know, not adopting this plan, we're gonna have to do something at some point, because the deferred maintenance is just gonna keep stacking up, and so we're gonna be left with no choice but to just close buildings. If we don't pass a bond, we're gonna have to close buildings with nothing else positive to go along with it.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I appreciate you bringing that up, Hazel, because I think that makes the point, is that without a plan in, existing, it would move so slow that you, it'd almost feel like you didn't have a plan. And then, as Julie would say, if we keep kicking this down the road, this can down the road, then we're going to end up where we were in February or March of last year, where we just named the next two or three schools. So, I would much prefer to try to manage it and have a roadmap, as opposed to just reacting.
Well, and I just wanna say, it would, it would be impossible to commit your entire capital outlay plan to implementing the facility master plan. I, you know, I mean, we approve emergency situations all the time, plus we also have goals as a board that we wanna do relative to facilities, that we're, you know, we're not gonna automatically, no longer have any capital needs. And, you know, technology, I mean, it's, it reiterates the comment that I made several board meetings back, that our state school finance formula, relative to our capital outlay funding, is not adequate to keep up with facility needs in a district. That the school finance formula is set such that routinely, school districts need to have funding from other sources, which is why all throughout the state, schools are passing bond issues. So, anyway, that gets into next week's discussion, or two weeks from now, the next board meeting, but I don't really have any questions. I'm supportive of the plan for the reasons you outlined, Luke, and also for the way it does, just tied together with our strategic plan. Some of the points that Hazel has made relative to, you know, we have needs that we've got to address, and it's much better, much better to have a plan to address them than to just stumble on down the road with high maintenance needs and not a way to deal with those. So, I thank you for your work, and thank you for your team's work, and am supportive of what you've put together here, Luke.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. And I think you made a good point about emergency situations. I have always said that one of the roles of the Board of Education is to maintain and increase the trust in our school system. And the day we, if we ever have, if we ever have a day where there's an emergency, and we have to tell the public, we don't have the money or the plan to deal with that emergency, which other school districts have had happen. You know, there was a year where the Baltimore Public Schools could not turn on the heat during the winter, and they had an extremely cold winter, for that was their emergency. So, that is our job, is to maintain and increase the trust, and one of, I think, the one thing the public would never forgive us for, is if the, if an emergency situation came up, and there's emergencies all the time, but if an emergency situation came up and we said, "Sorry, it's just gonna have to sit there," that's when you would really, the public would lose trust in us. Noc?
Yes, with the step-one of the facility master plan, how many students and staff are affected total? Like, whether you're talking about the demolitions and rebuilds, the closures, like the additions and all that?
I'd have to get back to you on that number, I don't, yeah.
Okay. And then, my second question, so Woolport and Creative Entourage have an 85% success rate with bond issues, what's the number, you'll probably have to get back to me on this too, what's the number, the success rate for like large urban school districts?
That they've had?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that, too.
Okay, and then, I'd also be curious to see like case studies of like, again, with like these larger urban school districts, you know, bond issues that passed, bond issues, bond issues that failed, you know, what were some of those conditions that, you know, led to those bond issues, like passing or failing?
Yeah, yeah, I'll ask him to actually speak to that at the, at the meeting on the 9th. I will say, just actually, I can't give you an official answer to that last question, but most of the work they do is with larger urban school districts, they're not, they're not consulting with many small districts, it's mostly kind of our size, so I think the 85% probably holds pretty true for most larger districts.
And then, how many funds are going towards high school maintenance with step-one of the facility master plan?
It's kinda fluctuated a little bit, we started out with 60 million, and then as we kinda revised the plan, that number came down a little bit. So, it's, I mean, at this point, I think we're probably more in the 30 to 40 million, but it's, they're very conceptual numbers at this point, so as we get into the pre-bond development work, we'll really fine-tune those numbers and have a lot better idea of where everything, where all the dollars are gonna go.
And then in terms of combining, you know, sours and wells, like those alternative schools, like what was the response from the principals and staff about that?
With combining the wells and sours?
Yep.
Do you wanna speak to that, or?
Yeah, I can't, I mean, that's, I mean, quite literally why we changed the plan, was because of the feedback from the principals, you know, they walked to the Jardine site, realized this either was not real conducive or gonna take quite a bit of resources to make it conducive. You know, the well site used to be K-8 with Griffenstein Wells there. We think a 612 is a better fit, as far as putting all the secondary kids, they have those needs together. You can pool resources, you can, you know, you can triage together, and, you know, again, there's some advantages there. It's not to say there isn't gonna be any cost to that change, but, you know, the change, the plan hasn't changed much from what we saw in June, but this is one of the changes and is really, quite literally based on feedback from staff, why we changed it.
Okay. And then, last question, this might be better suited for the Transform '24 report, but, okay, so Park turned into the multi-agency center, with Jardine, there's plans for the city to turn into some kind of community center. For the other four schools, like, how do they play into the facility master plan?
They, they don't play into this, but we do need to come up with what our long-term plans are for those sites, and that's something that we intend to get sorted out as we move into the next phase. You know, the goal is for all sites that we're vacating to have a plan, whether it's, you know, we demo it, or we sell it to somebody, and they have a use for it, but we wanna make sure that we have a good plan that we can share with the public for all the buildings we're moving out of.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, again, that's a good point that you're making, Noc, in that the plan you see right in front of you today, which would include combining wells and sours, it may, every intention is to do it that way, but as we mentioned in the workshop Friday, there will always things come up, and if any of us are around, you know, when the step-one of this plan is completed, you know, save this piece of paper, and I'm sure, I'm sure you're gonna see a few changes here and there.
So, I did wanna say, okay, just one point I wanted to make sure was clear, you know, tonight, we're asking for approval, or for a vote on the plan, on the 9th of September, we're gonna ask for direction as far as the bond issue goes. And to make a decision whether we're gonna put this in front of the voters or not, one of the speakers from earlier today made this case that there, this decision isn't pressing. I 100% disagree with that assertion. Susan got into the bond cap discussion last time, which is very confusing and over my head, but there is a reason for us to move on this. We, you know, we've had this plan since June, and we've had 60 days to kinda process it and get feedback and evaluate it, and now we're asking for a decision. So, if there's more information that's needed before, you know, September 9th, please let me know, but we do need to get this, I mean, he kinda walked through, we do need to get this on the State Board of Ed agenda, we do need to move forward with this and have a plan for getting it funded. Whether that's, you know, no, we don't wanna go that route, or yes, we do, now's the time in September to decide which direction we're gonna go, so we can, we can gear up and start educating about, you know, a vote, or look at other options, so.
Melody?
That's it. Sorry.
I do have a question for you, Luke, and it's kind of in line with what Noc was just asking, and that is, when we talk about the investment in high school maintenance needs, do we have, or can we get an itemized listing and then a prioritized, really, a prioritized itemized listing of how we're going to infuse these dollars into our high school maintenance needs that are identified? Do we already have that, or?
Yeah, I mean, my biggest priority, I think, would just be making sure our envelopes are tight, and making sure our brick is sealed up, we're doing tuck pointing, restoring the mortar where we need, and then roofs where we can. But just between those two things, that would eat up more than what we would have available for the high schools.
And, well, I'm talking about if the bond issue should pass, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, those would be my top two priorities.
How many dollars then would actually go into that?
I can get you a list of how much that would actually be, what that would represent in dollars.
Yeah, I think that would be wonderful, I'm sure buildings would like to know that.
Sure.
And then, this actually probably goes for our superintendent, and maybe you, Luke. So, I understand, and I heard you clearly, Kelly, that even if the bond issue, regardless, if the bond issue passes, or if it, if we move it forward, and then the public actually supports the bond issue, that this is the plan, period. And so, in terms of looking at this is the plan, so if it doesn't pass, from a teaching, from a building perspective, because this was a question that teachers asked me when I was there, is there an, a roadmap? Is it what we've actually seen already in terms of how we would move forward if it does not pass?
So, I think that's yet to be determined, at least in my mind, because there would be, almost any one of these things that we do, there would be a dollar figure associated to it, right? If we wanted to combine, or move sours over into the Wells facility, there'd be a dollar figure associated with it. Could we absorb that in a year under capital funds? That would be a decision, you know, we bring your recommendation, it's a decision you guys could make. With some of the building closures, I believe we would, again, bring you some suggestions, some recommendations for, you know, here is a building that we feel like, you know, enrollment has declined, just the same thing we did last, last spring. Show you the data and bring a recommendation, this is what we would recommend. The impact of that would be different, it'd be, it'd probably feel much more like what happened in March, unless, you know, more like a consolidation where we're putting two buildings into one. And I'm kinda spitballing here a little bit, but the, one of the things we operated from, and this probably got lost in some of the conversation, in the, in the spring, least disruption to the system was one of the things. least disruption to the system was one of the things we said a lot. So we knew that if we closed this building, that the three surrounding buildings could absorb those kids. And there wouldn't be this kind of, you know, ripple effect with boundaries that impact and impact and impact. Now, we did have that a little bit with Marshall Middle School, with Hadley, uh, we, we did have to impact some kids out of Marshall, uh, to go to PV because of, because there wasn't room there. If we, if we have the plan and we say, okay, if, if it's, um, Woodlawn Elementary, or Woodland, I'm sorry, um, that is gonna be closed, those kids are gonna go where? Well, those, the, the next ring of schools may not have a lot of room, so then the next ring gets impacted and so on and so forth. So, there's a potential of more disruption to the system, depending on enrollment trend, I mean, depending on, depending on, right? There's lots of asterisks to this, but if the, if the demographic trends hold, and they are what we are projecting, and we see, you know, these buildings, we'll come across decisions, you know, this is a building that was built in nineteen fifty-five. Luke brings us a three hundred million dollar repair, and now we have a decision to make. You know, would we put three hundred, three million dollars into this, or do we make a different decision? So, those will be the kinds of decisions that I think are on the forefront that might be year by year. I mean, it may not be, you know, this is the plan and we, okay, now this one pops up, so we're gonna have to deal with that one ahead of the other ones. Um, where I do think the roadmap that Stan talked about is a really good analogy that, you know, an ability to control our own destiny to some speed, just, just, and one way to say it, um, to have a vision and a plan to, to build and strategically put schools in certain places that kids need as opposed to just reacting that, oh, here's the next, you know, as you guys know, you just approved, uh, you know, north and northwest, twelve million dollars in North High, right? Like that, that, that is the next thing, um, you know, that kind of, you know, quite literally keeps us up at night. That where's the next one of those in this portfolio of buildings that, you know, if you remember Susan's scale that tips with the old buildings and the new buildings, you know, that's, the scale's weighted heavy with old buildings. If we could tip that scale and right-size it, it helps ease the entire system, so.
I appreciate your, uh, the detail, um, and the, it's, and the not knowing, I can appreciate that. But I'm just, I should have been even more clear, uh, what, what I, what I heard from teachers was that they would like to have that roadmap. They would like to know ahead as opposed to being told, um, two months out, within the same month. So I just, I wanted to be able to bring that and, and make that clear. The, the other, uh, thing that I, I want to discuss for just a moment has to do with the master plan. And I am supportive of the master plan, so I'm looking forward to being able to, um, and I've stated this to others, that I'm gonna be supportive of the bond issue, of us being able to, um, move it forward so people can, can support it. But what I'd like to add to that is a little bit of a different perspective, and that is, uh, looking at it through the lens of what I was able to glean from some of the, um, results of the respondents in the survey that Alloy did. And actually, this is, uh, from June twenty-seventh, so it would have been their latest one, where they stated that in January of the three thousand and seventy-one respondents, uh, fifty-eight percent selected out optimizing school utilization through thoughtful consolidating of some schools to supporting, uh, support the needs of students to help the district realize its vision. And with that, I'm looking at an opportunity for us to truly engage with the community, and I'm talking about the community at large and how it is that we educate, how it is that we provide the edifice, that is, the structure, the brick and mortar, that's what this is about. I, I understand that, but we all know, and it's needed. Uh, there's no question. It's needed. Um, it's way past time, actually. Um, but we also know that student outcomes really are based on, uh, teacher administrator, s- s- support staff relationship. I mean, that's really where it's coming from. So when we look at it, when we look at it through that lens, I think, and we look at who it is that we're educating, it's time for us to get serious about really incorporating community into how we look at educating. And I believe the community schools, and it doesn't have to be specific to community schools, because there's lots of documentation, and I'm just gonna read a bit, um, after, after, and during school programs, benefiting, uh, the community and over, and our families by providing programs that are run by nonprofits that may reduce, uh, the time that children otherwise would spend outside of school. Um, they'd be in-school learning in these wonderful new spaces as well as having access, access to different services that others in our community could provide. And that doesn't necessarily have to be at a cost to us. We should be able to best utilize, optimize how we use our buildings. So I think that thinking, that lens needs to be incorporated into when we're talking about actually executing on a master plan. And when, and, and it could be conversation that can be had when we're talking about a bond issue that I think would land very well with our public. Uh, the other thing that was talked about, and I'll just, I'll just add this, um, is what's called, uh, Bond Oversight Committee. And I say that because in order to engage a community to trust, I mean, that was a conference, that was a question that we talked about in our, uh, agenda and our workshop meeting that we just had, but in order to waylay some of the concerns, some of the questions that our public has and, and may continue to have, it's possible that being able to utilize a Bond Oversight Committee, and here's what I was able to find, was that it would review bids. I'm not saying that this is exactly what we would incorporate, but review bids and purchases that, um, it would look at the design and concepts. They aren't, they aren't making the decision, they're advising, they're, they're being a part of this. And, and that's what I've always been trying to, um, ensure that that's what we're doing, is bringing the community to the table so that they are partners in how we do this. Advise, they're simply advising us. Um, and I don't know if that's a part that the, um, our newly formed Education and Accountability Committee could have a part of that, because I know that they're gonna be also helping and looking at the master plan. But once again, I say all this because community is important. We're gonna need them in order to actually pass this once we move it, uh, forward, if we move it forward. And I think that these are some concepts that are not new, but we know that they're grounded in evidence and that they work, and it wouldn't necessarily cost us additional dollars, but it would be in the planning. So that's, I wanted to be able to add that.
I think a lot of what you just touched on, um, you're gonna hear a lot of the same things from, from Woolport when they present, uh, next month, so that's, that's all good input.
And I appreciate you, uh, expressing support for a roadmap, because I think that is the difference between, we have a roadmap now that, like Luke said, is probably gonna take five, six, maybe portions of it might even take in ten years. Compare that to the roadmap we gave people back in February and March. And that roadmap was, uh, you have, you have, we are closing your school after the end of this in May. We, three-month notice, things like that. So that's what we're, and then, well, and the one thing that really is, I think, is important for us to realize tonight is that without a master plan, there is no connection with our facilities back to the strategic plan. And I think Superintendent Be- Beilefeld made a good point tonight of connecting the two. But without a plan, without that roadmap, then we have two separate entities. We have the master plan, I mean, we have a facilities, and then we have our strategic goal. They're separated right now. We need to merge those in order to make progress. Diane, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments, but I'll move that the Board of Education accept and approve the final draft of the Facilities Master Plan for step one.
Okay, I think I heard Melody first, if you don't mind.
Both enthusiastically moving forward.
It was very close, it was very close. Moved by Diane, seconded by Melody. Uh, further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Please?
Yes, yes, that'd be fine. Let's go ahead and take a, a ten-minute break. Thank you, Kathy. And Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Operations, Transform Twenty Four Report.
Transform Twenty Four.
Well, good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, members of the board. Um, tonight is really kind of a, a, a wrap-up to a work that started really last spring. Um, and I want to share, this is my, this is my twenty-fifth, uh, school year with the Wichita Public Schools. Um, and very rarely, thank you, have I've had the opportunity to work on projects that have involved this level of involvement from so many different areas, um, in that flowed together really as, as seamless as it did. Uh, I'm incredibly proud of the work that happened, but I, I want to say very honestly that even though I'm up here presenting, this, this, this work is really the culmination of a lot of, sorry. This work is really a culmination of a lot of people coming together, um, to do what was best for students in our system. Um, and so a lot of those people are in this room right now, um, and, and we'll, we'll get a little bit further into that as, as we get into the presentation. Um, so first, um, just a little bit of a timeline, if you all choose to go back there, I know that it was a challenging time for all of us. Um, but just a little reminder of how we got here. Um, and please know, you can turn around, I know the, the slides are very, very small, so you're more than welcome to turn around and, and look at the presentation. If it's easier to read, you're not gonna hurt my feelings. Um, but, you know, they started out really January twenty-second with a budget presentation that our amazing CFO, uh, Susan Willis did for us, really highlighting, um, some of the, some of the financial challenges that we were getting ready to face. On the board meeting of February the twelfth, uh, the school closure was, uh, recommendation was made at that point, um, recommending the closure of Clark Elementary, Cleveland Elementary, Park Elementary, Payne Elementary, um, Hadley Middle School, and Jardine Middle School. And as part of that, we also set forward a listening plan and a plan for communications with the community. At that point, we also sent letters to all impacted families, letting them know that this plan was in place, a recommendation had been made, and what potential choices they would have. We also held listening sessions on the twenty-first of February at Marshall Middle School, the twenty-second, uh, at West High School, and then again on the twenty-sixth here in this building at AMAC. Um, from there, um, the BOE approved the closure, the resolution to close those buildings on, uh, the board meeting of March fourth. Um, and then boundaries were approved that same night. That, after that night, it's been go since then through now. Um, and so I really started work, you all were gracious enough to attend some of our meetings the next morning with impacted staff at all of our school sites. Um, but again, this, this really truly has been a collective effort. Uh, we put together a Transform Twenty Four team that, that, we had people from facilities, from human resources, uh, from our academic side, both the elementary and secondary office, operations, strategic communications, um, Kiwana Bowen, who's back there, um, you know, uh, led our, our customer, uh, service team and did a phenomenal job of doing that. So again, it's been, it was, it was go-go after that point. That group met bi-weekly really to anticipate some challenges, to look at potential ways that we could ease the transition and really brainstorm about what was the most effective way, uh, to do this, um, really to attain minimal impact to the system, make sure that our families and staff that were impacted were served. And that work, we continue to meet bi-weekly through the end of the school year, met a couple of times in the summer, and then we're getting ready to have our final wrap-up meeting here in the fall. When it comes to human resources and impacted staff, um, and I'm not gonna steal Sean's thunder and his team, he's gonna have a presentation for you in a, in a, in a couple of weeks, all I have to say is they did an amazing job of, 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 of managing a tough situation, and I think the numbers speak for themselves. Um, out of all three hundred and eighty-three impacted staff members, we had separation from forty-two of them, so less than ten percent, and half of those roughly were retirements, uh, some that were already planned. And some of those separations that were not retirements were actually people that were already planning to move out of state. But when you look at the massiveness of this whole piece, um, the fact that, again, out of this, we lost just a little bit over ten percent of our, of our impacted staff speaks volumes. And the other part tied to that, and I think we all experienced it, is, you know, with, with the staffing shortages that we've had, part of the reason why our vacancies are so low at this point, it's because a lot of those staff moved on to vacant positions. Um, and again, staff went all, all over the district as a part of this. Um, and I also, as, as a part of this work too, on top of the work that human resources did, I do want to highlight our facilities team and the work that Christie Zarnik in particular and Jenny Robinson did in our facilities. They are the ones that managed the moves for all impacted staff. So all, um, all certified staff at one eighty-seven, we moved through the summer, uh, and they did an amazing job coordinating all of those moves. I was on pins and needles, I was for sure knew we were gonna get some calls, uh, and really, I think, we only had one call for one piece, uh, that was left back that we were able to move out. So again, kudos to them and the phenomenal job that they did also in managing, because this was a massive undertaking. These teachers did not follow students. They, they've met different vacancies throughout our entire system. So when we initially thought, oh, they're just gonna move with the students, the reality is, and you'll see the distribution of students, our students ended up in several different locations. So coordinating moves from one school to another, to another, um, was incredibly challenging. Um, also, I gotta commend John Wies as a part of this, because he's also been able to help with some of the, some of the equipment pieces, and then supporting Christie, um, as a part of this work. So, I put, this was a unique transitional year, um, in this next slide. Um, and I say unique, um, it was very uniquely challenging because we implemented quite a few changes between last year and this year. And I want to say these were great, great changes that we made, um, that are best for our system. But they impacted a lot of the projections that we did, and they also impacted a lot of the planning that we did. Um, the first was our school closures, obviously the closing of the six buildings in the plan that we presented you. But then we also expanded our ESOL program. Um, all of our elementary schools now are able to serve ESOL students. Where in the past, for example, if you were an ESOL student at White Elementary, you went to, um, Anderson Elementary to receive ESOL services. Now, students that live in the White neighborhood, I don't want to say white kids, but students that live in the White neighborhood are now able to stay at White Elementary and receive ESOL services. Again, this happened all elementary. Uh, we also added two new middle school programs, a limited one at Robinson, and then also Wilbur, Wilbur Middle School added. And so all of this also changed our enrollment patterns for a lot of our students. We also made some expansions and changes to our newcomer program. We added, um, three elementary sites, so we added, um, Caldwell, we added Spate. Um, and then we moved the program at Park to Cloud. Um, on top of, there is another one that we added that escapes me, but we added three elementary programs, and then we also moved, um, the newcomer program from Jardine to Coleman Middle School. So again, these are all changes that were happening that were also impacting, um, our enrollment numbers. Um, we also increased our magnet, magnet acceptance numbers. Um, part of it was, we took, um, classroom sizes at those schools, uh, to more of our district standard, as well as we also, um, increased some classrooms at some of the more popular magnet schools in response to the application to allow more of our closing students to be able to attend those schools. So again, a lot of the initial plans were adapted to make sure that we were being responsive to impacted families also and responsive to the needs of the system. The out-of-district enrollment policy was also new this year, um, as well as we did some changes to special transfers in terms of centralizing some pieces, uh, in order for us to be able to ensure that we were assigning schools, we were not overcrowding particularly our welcoming schools as part of our special transfer process. Um, that on top of a couple of special ed programs that were moved. So again, it was just kind of that perfect storm of a lot of changes to student assignments, all good changes, all, all positive changes. all positive changes, but just a lot within a short period of time. So now, as we get to student numbers, first, what I ended up doing for this slide, and I'm going to throw a lot of numbers at you, so please know, feel free to ask any questions as we go along, I try to condense a lot of information into a small number of slides, but the first is really looking at our K-four enrollment, in our six-seven enrollment, from May twentieth, and then in comparison to August twenty-first. So I took the total number of students that were enrolled at our six closing schools, K-four, I took out fifth grade, because those students were already going to transition to middle school, and I took out eighth grade, because those students were already going to transition to high school, and also Head Start, or our Early Start, which is our pre-K students, because those students were assigned very differently. And so, the numbers that we're looking at are strictly students, K-four students that were at the closing schools, and then six-seven students that were at our closing middle schools. So out of those students, you can see the, really where our students ended up, and the plethora of choices that we gave them. We'll start at the top in the lighter, kind of tealish color, the five and seven percent. Those are students that were reassigned to different schools, because they were receiving ESOL services, or language support services. The red represents the number of students that exited from those buildings, so they were enrolled in May twentieth, they were no longer enrolled as of August twenty-first. Caveat, we still have a lot of enrollment volatility, as you all know, a lot of our families enroll late, but I want to highlight that red number. Out of all of those students, that red number represents five-point-six percent of these total students. So five-point-six percent of the total fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-nine students is the number of students that exited our system. I wanted to do a little exercise to compare it system-wide. And so, I took out all of our K-four enrollment system-wide, and all of our seven-eight enrollment district-wide, and that's about twenty-three-thousand-and-thirty-eight students. Of those, twelve-thirty-eight were enrolled May twentieth, and are no longer enrolled, were no longer enrolled, and that is actually five-point-three percent. So when you compare it, the five-point-six percent of these students that exited versus the five-point-three percent of all the students, it's only a point-three percent higher that these subset of students is higher, which is not a very big number. So I think a lot of us had fears that we would have a lot of exits out of this. The reality is, the number of exits from this subset of students is pretty comparable to where we are system-wide. As we keep going around, and I'm sorry, this is going to take a little bit, the next percentage of students are students that end up in magnet schools, and again, that's nineteen-point-five for elementary and fourteen-point-eight per middle school. We had more magnet seats available at our elementary level and were able to expand, had more flexibility to expand there. Then, the students that went back to the neighborhood, these are students that were on special transfer at the closing schools, or were attending a magnet school, those you'll see in the darker green, that shows you the percentages of students that enrolled back in their neighborhood schools. The number that was also eye-opening to me is the light blue. And the light blue, we talk a lot about high mobility within our system, right? We talk a lot that we're a highly mobile district. Well, when you look at our elementary schools, twenty-point-eight percent of those students had a different address in four months. And I went, because when I looked at it, I was a little shocked, and I went line by line for roughly about a thousand of these kids, because they were the ones that didn't match addresses, and really, and again, I feel pretty comfortable that these are the numbers. So again, at least at the elementary level, and we heard, particularly from Park Elementary, they have quite a few shelters, they have, they serve a high homeless population. So again, in some instances too, you could see that, but one out of five students at the elementary level that was at a closing school, K-four, had a different address. And then, it's ten-point-nine percent for middle school. The green is the other, that represents some of our special education students that were reassigned for categorical programs, and then also are a small number of special transfers that we approved to other schools. And then, the larger teal, the larger portion of the pie, really represents the students that ended up at our welcoming schools. So as you can see, there was a lot of, there were a lot of opportunities, our students made a lot of choices, and when I looked, I expected to see the welcoming schools and maybe one or two more schools, and the reality is, our students ended up all over the place, partially because of the changing addresses, and then again, some of the special transfers and other pieces. So now, I knew you would be interested also in understanding kind of what impact the transition had on our identified welcoming schools. And so, as you look at the circle graphs, the inner circle represents enrollment as of May twentieth, and then the outer circle represents enrollment as of August twenty-first of this year. So you're able to see the increases, the numbers underneath tells you the total number of students, but this also highlights the race, ethnicity demographics behind the changes. And really, for the most part, I think the highest percentage shift that we saw in any school was four-point-one percent. But other than that, I mean, I don't think, I think some of the perception was going to be that we were going to create single-rate schools, or really shift the demographics, but the reality is, four-point-one percent was the highest that I saw out of all of these transitions that we made. So going for Allen Elementary, and I'm just going to go one by one real quick, they were at four-forty-nine in May, five-twenty-four now, their functional capacity is five-ninety-three, and we were anticipating them to be around five-thirty, so we may have lucked out on the number, but we were only six off. Beach Elementary, four-ninety-two is where they were, five-fifty-two is where they were as of the twenty-first of this month, their functional capacity is six-fifteen, and we were expecting them to be around five-fifty-seven was the projection that we had. Caldwell, three-ninety-seven, now they're four-ninety, their functional capacity is five-sixty-six, and again, the projection was five-oh-one for them. The interesting part about Caldwell, they only received about thirty-six students. Part of the reason why we were conservative in the number of students that we assigned them was because we knew we were going to be opening up a newcomer program at Caldwell. There's a high, there's a neighborhoods nearby that provide a high number of newcomer students, and Christina Boyer has done a great job of kind of looking forward and helping us through this work, but we knew we were going to open up a program at Caldwell, and because of that, we were conservative in the number of students that we assigned them back in the spring. Irving Elementary, they were at three-sixteen, are now four-thirty-five, their capacity is four-eighty-five, so they're okay there. They received about seventy-five students, their projected capacity was four-seventy-three, or where we were projecting them to be, so this number ended up lower, less kids ended up going to Irving than what we were anticipating. Lawrence Elementary, three-sixty-one, and now they're at four-oh-five, we were anticipating them to be at four-oh-one, so they're about four students over, but their functional capacity is four-forty-six. Stanley Elementary, three-eighty-two, now they're four-forty-six. And again, their capacity for Stanley is four-fifty-six, they're closed, but the functional capacity is not their max capacity, it's middle-of-the-ground number, and so they would still have some room, even if they had an increase of students. Washington Elementary, this one I did a double take-on, and I went back and I reviewed the numbers, because I'm like, how can their numbers be lower than where they are now? The projections that we build were based on December numbers, and so we were projecting Washington after the transition to be at four-seventy-two, they're sitting at four-seventy, but why were they at four-eighty-five before the end of the school year? They're a newcomer site, we talked heavily about the fact that we got a whole bunch of, an influx of newcomers in the spring, and so they picked up about thirty newcomers between December and May. And so, that's the reason why they show a decline. Now, we'll have to keep an eye on them, because again, we can see those numbers increasing as we will continue to experience more and more newcomer students arriving into our system. And Woodman Elementary is the last elementary site, they were at five-seventy-seven, now six-twenty-six, their functional capacity is seven-eighteen, and we were expecting them to be at six-eighty-one, so again, they had less students than we were projecting for them. What, yes?
Hazel had a question.
Just wanted, could you give me Washington's functional capacity?
Oh, Washington's functional capacity is five-fifty-five. Now, when it comes to our middle schools... Hamilton was at five-thirty-two, they are at six-oh-nine now, we were expecting them to be at five-ninety-nine, so they're about ten students over what the projection was, but their functional capacity is eight-thirty-seven, so they should have the room. Marshall Middle School, four-ninety-four, now six-eleven, we were projecting them to be at five-ninety-six, so they're about fifteen kids over where we were expecting, but their functional capacity is seven-forty-three. We talked a lot about having a lot of room in our middle schools, and that still holds true. And I do want to share something about Marshall. We talk, we've been doing a lot of talk about the Facility Master Plan, right? And so, we looked at capacities based on classroom sizes, all of those pieces. There were some unintended consequences as a part of this, this whole process was not perfect, we learned quite a few lessons as a part of it. Marshall, for example, their cafeteria isn't very big. And so, we had to, and Lauren Hatfield and our secondary team did a great job of kind of responding appropriately, we added another lunch period to them, and that's how we were able to manage that piece. But again, when we talk about old facilities, or older facilities, you know, sometimes they're not built for the way that we structure in this day and age. Again, another piece, when we talk about potentially sending kids to, back to older facilities if we're having to close down the line, versus sending them to more state-of-the-art facilities that maybe would potentially have bigger cafeteria spaces that would allow us to be able to better serve those students. Mead Middle School was a receiver of Jardine, as you all knew, they were at five-oh-two, they are now sitting at seven-twenty-one. We were anticipating them to be at seven-fifty-one, so they have about thirty less kids than we were expecting, their functional capacity is eight-thirty-three. Pleasant Valley Middle School went from six-twenty-four to seven-sixty-five, their functional capacity is nine-thirty-three, and we were anticipating them to be at seven-eighty-six, so they got a few less kids than we had projected. And then, Wilbur Middle School is our last school, that, they're, they went from seven-sixty-nine to eight-thirty, I'm sorry, that white is driving me crazy, that OCD part of me, but I didn't have a choice, otherwise you couldn't see it. And so, they went from seven-sixty-nine to eight-thirty, and their functional capacity is nine-fifty-six, we were expecting them to be at eight-fifty-four, so they had a few less kids than what we were anticipating. So, I mean, those are really kind of your overall numbers, we continue to monitor, and we will continue to monitor, but we wanted kind of to combine all of those pieces, really illustrate to you that really, when it comes to, from a demographic standpoint, not a lot of changes were made, and we were able to absorb those students. Now, we continue to monitor, and I think that's part of our next slide, we will continue to monitor enrollment and respond if class sizes go above or below the identified ranges. I looked at average classroom sizes for all of these schools, and they're all sitting on the twenty, on the twenty range, but again, just because the average is twenty doesn't mean that there aren't grade, particular grade levels that are higher than that. I know both Michelle and Lauren have been meeting and discussing kind of what, in responding, and you heard Katie earlier mention, that there had been some moves in response to some of the growths that we've seen. And we'll also respond if additional supports are needed, and that is kind of really our intent, is if these schools, because of the population shifts that they have, if there's additional supports, we'll continue to monitor some of those pieces. We'll continue to look at equipment redistribution from our closing schools, we prioritized needs instead of wants, and so, when whatever needs our welcoming schools had in terms of equipment, we prioritized. Now, we get to the wants, we don't want schools to go out and buy equipment that they potentially want, and so then, we'll be looking at expanding that in the fall, but again, our priority was to move teachers and to move the needs first, and now we'll focus on the other pieces. Next, I think tied to the comment that was made earlier, the question about facility usage. Our intent is to start a facility usage committee that will identify needs or potential uses for the future for these closed facilities, so Mr. Vaughn, to answer your question, that is our intent, is to start this committee here in the next month, that will not only assess the future use of the closed facilities now, but then we could have the Standing Committee to start looking into future, as we could potentially have additional closures in the future. Academic performance review during the fall and the spring of the assessment windows, also, we'll be looking at that particularly, I know that our principal supervisors do that all the time, but the primary focus will obviously be on our welcoming schools, just to see the impact. And really, the last piece is to document, really, this process for future. There's been a lot of learning lessons, this has been an incredibly massive collaborative effort, and again, I can't take credit for it, it's really been a team effort, so making sure that we document all those pieces, so if we do have to endeavor in this exercise in the future, we'll be ready to go. But considering the massiveness of this particular challenge in the timeline that we had, really, I'm very proud of the work that our team did, and came together to really respond in the best way possible to not only our community and our student needs, but also our staff needs. That'll open it up for questions.
Cathy?
The Closed Facility Usage Committee, who do you see sitting on that? Is it administration, is it building staff?
I can answer that.
Great.
What we're looking to create is a core committee with some of us, but also some community folks, probably some people maybe from Parks and Rec, from the city, some developers, some builders, having a core group, and then when we want to go evaluate a property, let's say Payne Elementary, then we engage with the community around that school. So instead of trying to get, you know, people from all over the community who may or may not have knowledge or interest in different areas, we have kind of a core committee that will go and facilitate the process of talking to the, you know, to the community, what do you envision neighborhood for this? There'll be some decisions we make about properties that we want to keep, and so that group will also kind of make those decisions, but we want to have a pretty clear process in place, so that kind of regardless, you know, now that we have a master plan, we're going to move forward, we're going to have other properties that we need to decide what to do with, and so we want to have a kind of a standard group that does that. It takes time, it'll be systematic, you know, it's not necessarily, you know, we don't want to make, you know, knee-jerk decisions, but that's the division of that group, that we hope to get going September, October.
You see them meeting monthly, weekly?
Oh, no, no, not weekly, probably every other month, I would say, yeah, something like that.
Will we be able to know who they are once that committee is formed? Okay, great.
One more thing that I do want to clarify too, is tomorrow, we will be shutting down our Transform Twenty Four phone line and contact, I think we're kind of far along in the school year, and they haven't really been getting a lot of inquiries, so, and again, a huge thank you to Kiwana for leading that work and effort, because they did a phenomenal job of responding to our...
Melody?
Great presentation. Expansion of ESOL, do we have all of these certified ESOL teachers? Do we have enough teachers that are ESOL certified?
Yes, and Christina has, I don't want to steal her thunder, I'm sure eventually you'll get a chance to hear her, they have a plan in place, they do have some roving teachers to address some of the schools that have low numbers, but we do have endorsed teachers at every single one of our buildings. Again, we opened it up for our families to remain in the neighborhood if they wanted to receive services, but we did not send anybody back, so if you were already attending Anderson, you're continuing to attend Anderson, while we continue to build that capacity at some of the other buildings. So again, they continue to promote the endorsement process for a lot of our teachers, and my understanding is, we have, I think, I think close to a hundred teachers right now that are enrolled, trying, getting their endorsement, so we continue to work through that. Again, I don't want to steal their thunder, they're the experts there, but there is a plan in place.
We're good.
Answer your question, yeah, and so that you know, if you maybe would, you probably understand this, but making sure we do, the kind of former system was that student, or families who didn't want to leave their neighborhood school in order to access services would sign a waiver, which was denying services, so it wasn't a good thing that they were signing that waiver, we understand why they wanted to stay in their neighborhood school, but because we weren't offering it everywhere, we were requiring them to go somewhere, so you either pick your neighborhood school or pick services, now they don't have to make that choice. But we are monitoring numbers and staffing, and we'll add staff on those spots if we need to, so. need to, so.
All right, well, thank you, Fabian.
Appreciate it.
Patrick, next item.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
Mr. Superintendent, go ahead.
Two quick things. Well, first off, Fabian mentioned, you know, dozens of other people without really mentioning himself. He wasn't just sitting at his desk twiddling his thumbs when I said, hey, would you mind leading this committee for us? So thank you to Fabian for organizing, facilitating, and working. And another thank you in the same way, you know, when you walk into a room and you flip on the light switch, you don't think about the electricity and the wires and how it even gets there. We flipped the white switch in 809 tonight, and you see all of these wires and all of these things in here, and we just walked in and it's all working, right? I mean, it's been phenomenal. I don't know what all those doodads that Jennifer has plugged into her thing there are, but kudos to the team for making this happen on such short notice because we walked in, and thank you, Patrick, thank you, Joseph, thank you to Wendy and staff, because it all worked, and we appreciate you guys turning it on so quickly. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned Patrick, Joseph, Wendy and her team, and Akiko, because I saw them working very hard to help make this happen too, so thank you.
Patrick, next item.
Next item, under miscellaneous, Board of Education reports and requests.
Any board requests or reports?
Kathy?
I attended the District Crisis Meeting this last week, and they're on top of it, and Terry runs a great tight ship. Told you I would talk about you. And I'm privileged to serve on that committee. I met a marine on Friday at McConnell for the airshow. The Board of Education here has been invited to an educators workshop in San Diego, all expenses paid, next April, and it's boot camp. So if you all are interested in going through a combat fitness test, or an aircraft display, or like a K-9 demo, I mean, I've got everything here that you need, so. Colonel Poole told me to do it, so I don't know, I might do it, because I've always wanted to be in the military, so I can get a taste of it for a week. Don't know if I'll be able to walk when I get home, but, and other than that, that's all I have.
Any other reports or requests? Okay. Patrick, next item, please.
Any new business?
Pat?
Thank you. I just wanted to open up a little bit of discussion about the air conditionings in our buildings and the heat that we are all enduring this week. It was 101 degrees today with a heat index of 107, and I received an email from Wilbur, and I think Luke, you received, is he still here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I can't see you behind the, okay. You may have received the same email, because she sent it to me also. And then, of course, with North High dropping power, I shared it had nothing to do with AC problems, but I think that Katie mentioned earlier is that there are some rooms that are experiencing now, it's supposed to be 100 degrees for the next three days with heat indexes anywhere from 107 to 110. What is the district known, what do you do in a case like this when the classrooms are uncomfortably hot? Stan, if you could tell me, or Kelly?
I would say we just work the problem, right? So last year, if you remember, Riverside had a portion of the building with AC, a portion that didn't. They relocated to the library, they relocated to other classrooms. We had, I think it was Horace Mann last summer, the whole building lost air conditioning, we canceled school for the day.
Okay.
So there isn't necessarily a...
Whole school problem.
Well, it just depends on the situation, just like any other power outage, any other event that might come up that causes, you know, we monitor it all, we keep track of it. Luke's team does a good job. That isn't to say every classroom is completely comfortable at 72 degrees, but we do make, we make, you know, make do with situations as they come up, so.
Okay, so when I get these emails, I should just forward them on to Luke?
Yes.
Okay. Luke, be ready.
That's it.
Thank you, and...
Unless you know how to fix HVAC. Okay, well, then. Get you a wrench.
And I appreciate that, and Patrick, if you don't mind, we'll put that under a part of her board report.
So noted.
Since new business is kind of a different thing, anyway. Okay, next item, Patrick?
Next item, adjournment?
And our next meeting is September 9th with the agenda review workshop the Friday before at, scheduled at this time, we'll let you know if that changes. All those, oh, a motion to adjourn? Moved by Stan, seconded by Kathy, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, everyone.